Good evening and welcome to the Thursday, October 11th, 2012 meeting of the North Hampton School Committee. I'm Mayor David Narcoitz and we have just convened and come out of an executive session and we're back in the regular meeting. Let's begin the meeting by having the roll call for the regular meeting.
Mayor David Narcoitz?
Present.
Mr. Alden Moore?
Here.
Ms. Edelwalt?
Present.
Mr. Michael Flynn?
Here.
Mr. Danny Meyer?
Present.
Ms. Lisa Minnick?
Here.
Mr. Howard Moore?
Here.
Ms. Stephanie Trigg?
Here.
Mr. Andrew Schelfer?
Here.
Mr. Ezra Husky?
Present.
Your Honor, your humble form.
Thank you. We'll next move on to the public comment period. I have a sign up sheet in front of me and I have a three-minute timer which we can use. I'll ask you to state your name and address for the record. And the first speaker this evening is Jennifer McKenna.
Good evening. Jennifer McKenna. I'm at 89th Orange Street in Leeds. I was here in September to speak to a later high school start time.
Excuse me.
Can you hear me?
I can hardly hear you either into the mic or just a little louder.
Okay.
The mic is not amplific-- no, no, no.
That's just for the television.
Don't do that. Is that okay? Can you hear me?
It's on.
No.
The microphone isn't for us. It's for the television.
Yeah.
Can you hear me now? Well enough. Okay. Thank you. I was here in September to speak to a later high school start time and I'm back on that issue. I hope to learn tonight that you'll take action to approve either an 8:15 high school start time, the proposal that was brought last time, tweaked to minimally affect the JFK community, or an 8:30 high school start time with no change to the JFK schedule. If that pushes back high school bus pickup time, that would be fabulous. I'm paying $300, $300 for a bus pass. Can't use it in the morning because it's too early for my child. And the afternoons, he has to stay after many days after school anyway. Many parents have this dilemma. Either one of these proposals will make this crucial change. There's no question that a later high school start time is in the educational interest of our children. You've all acknowledged that the research demonstrates clear and powerful educational benefits of a later high school start time. Higher test scores, grades, SATs, greater motivation, greater enjoyment of learning. And, as you know, the implications of the start time go even further, affecting teens' very health and safety. Physical wellness, levels of depression, risk for driving and biking accidents. In all, this change is nothing less than imperative. Adjustments to family routines and logistics will be part of making this change. Weight against the overwhelming academic health and safety benefits to our kids, I don't think there's any contest over which is more important. Neither of these proposals will cost anything, as far as I understand. The bottom line, I want my child to have as rich and invigorating and successful a career as he can possibly have at North Hampton High School. He's one of the kids whose circadian rhythm phase shift kicked in last year. He's struggling in the mornings. His grades have been affected. His teacher, his early morning teacher, has said to me, "He's getting paler and paler in the mornings if there's anything you can do." Tried melatonin. He's a disciplined kid. Other parents have suggested Benadryl at night and coffee in the morning. I don't want to be drugging my child to meet this schedule. The too-early high school schedule start time is a clear obstacle to maximizing his high school career. I think that's true for other kids as well. We've had testimony to that. Fifty-three percent of high school kids in North Hampton say they're falling asleep some of the time or a lot of the time in high school. If fifty-three percent of you all were falling asleep at work during the day or in these meetings, it would be a problem that would need to be addressed. It's a problem that needs to be addressed in our high school. And it can be addressed. We've got two proposals that could work. In the face of incontrovertible research findings that a later start time will improve academic health and safety outcomes for our high school students, in the face of unanimous reports of increased academic achievement by other districts that have moved to a later start time, I implore you to make this change. It's long overdue. Please vote this month to institute a later start time at the high school effective September 2013. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next-- well, there's actually two people signed up, but I'm assuming you want to go back to back. So Kathy Hanauer and then Dan Jones.
Yeah, you know what? I'll speak for both of us, but I'll use less than six minutes. How about that?
Is that okay?
Less than five.
We generally don't let people--
We can take over halfway through. He's not going to-- he's going to take longer to get through.
Well, the rules, we generally don't yet let people yield their time to other people. So I think Dan would have to come up there and follow behind you. So, yeah.
I'll hold on for a second.
I'm just-- those are the rules of the committee, so.
Okay.
Whenever you're ready.
Go. As you all probably know by now, my name is Kathy Hanauer and I'm the author of four books and the mother of two NHS students, a senior and a freshman. I'm sure you're all sick of seeing me up here talking about the high school start time and believe me, I'm sick of being here. First time was in 2007 when the now-high school senior, my daughter, was still in middle school. It's too late now for her, but it's not too late for my son. And when I hear people say, as I have recently, that if a later start time doesn't pass now, this issue will go away, I just shake my head. Because I can tell you, this is not going away. The people in this town who know the facts about teens and sleep, and there are more coming up every day, will not stop fighting until this unpleasant, unhealthy, and counterproductive to learning start time the high school has changed. Many of us are parents and parents don't stop fighting for something that will help their kids or fighting against something that's hurting their kids physically, emotionally, and educationally. My son, the freshman, is a straight A student who soaks up knowledge and loves to learn, who has good friends and who, as a freshman, plays on the JVA soccer team. He loves the challenge of hard classes, loves being treated with respect by the staff and teachers at NHS, and he's nice. He's a good kid. He loves dogs. He volunteers at the Survival Center. He's also 14 years old and as a young freshman, he just started his growth spurt. He weighs 87 pounds. His brain and body are growing dramatically, most of all at night, and every medical expert out there will tell you he needs eight to nine hours of sleep a night to grow and develop properly. And that's what he'd have gotten 30 years ago before they changed school busing to a three-tiered system and made high schools the earliest of the three so that five-year-olds didn't have to stand outside for their buses at 6:15 a.m. So now the 14 and 16-year-olds do that. And the result, thanks to the teenage time clock, as we all know well by now, is that they get one to three hours less sleep a night than they used to, and ADD, ADHD, and obesity, not to mention absenteeism, tardiness, and depression are all exponentially worse than they used to be. Drug use for these sleep deprivation-caused conditions is rampant and NHS is no exception. You can buy Adderall like candy at NHS. This is true. I can't tell you the number of kids I know who took these drugs last week for their SAT, which was held at 7:45 a.m. My son rarely falls asleep before 11:00 at night because that's how his teenage time clock works. He drags himself from bed at 6:40 a.m., comes down grumpy and exhausted, forgets things he needs that are right in front of his face. One morning last week, as he tried to put in his contact lenses with his eyes swollen from being woken at what for a teenage boy is the adult equivalent at 4:00 a.m., he said to me, "I hate school." Every mother knows these words are like a dagger in your heart. My son is not a kid who should hate school, but this is how he feels when he has to get up this early, when he has to go to school sleep deprived for what for him is the middle of the night. Later that day, I asked him, "You don't really hate school, do you?" And he hesitated then said, "Mostly I just hate first period because I'm so tired." Yesterday morning, as I watched him try to force himself awake, I said, "Go back to bed." He thanked me profusely, fell back to sleep until 9:30, and then got up refreshed and biked to school in time for the middle of second period.
Reset? Whenever you're ready, Dan.
7:30 is not a smart time, a healthy time, a safe time, or a humane time to start school. And now finally, after years of this battle, every school committee member claims to know this. So then why are we still doing it? Why is this change so insanely hard to vote to make? We have proposals before us. They don't cost money. They don't hurt athletics. They don't hurt Smith classes. All the obstacles that have hindered this in the past have been removed by the superintendent. All it takes now is courage. The courage to make a good, smart, safe, and important change. Will you rise to the challenge of that? Or will you let Amherst do it without us and once more leave us in the dirt? Will you accept mediocrity or worse, particularly for low-income kids who don't have the option, like the mayor and myself, of driving our kids to school so they don't have to catch a 6:15 a.m. bus? Or picking them up after school so they don't have time to take a bus home? That leaves five minutes after the school day. Will you accept this sad, unfair status quo and go down as the school committee that voted for that? Or will you be the school committee that finally, like so many now nationwide, reverses this harmful, damaging change of the past and brings us back to a start time that leads to health, excellence, and thriving for all families? You have one good proposal on the table, number three, that gives our teenagers a net benefit of 405 hours more sleep over the seven years of middle and high school. It makes a small change to one school, a change that likely can be tweaked even smaller in exchange for a huge change at another that will benefit every single public school kid in North Hampton. You can vote for this right now and be done with this mess. Or you have another proposal, possibly even better, that will likely come up tonight. It surely won't be perfect because life isn't perfect, but life can be a lot better than it is now for our kids if you change the high school start time. Please pick one of these good proposals. Please don't let adult politics take precedence over health, the health and success of our children. Please do the smart and right thing here. Change the start time and do it now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you both. Okay. So the next speaker is Jim Haridy.
My name is Jim Haridy from 225 Nonotuck Street in Florence, and I'd like to comment on the start time and a couple of other things. And in theory, I'm in favor of, you know, changing to a later start time if it can be reasonably implemented. And I think that's the key, if it's reasonably implemented. But first, I'd like to-- it's my understanding that the committee gave the superintendent a positive evaluation over for his last year, and I would concur with that. And anybody that would hire my wife has to be doing something, right? But one of the things I really like about what's been implemented is the theory of action in the school improvement plan. And it distills the essence of what, you know, needs to be done in a school year. And it's clear and it's a lot different than what it used to be in the past. And so as I look down the school improvement plan, there's a lot of, you know, big things there. You know, there's six strategic areas. Teacher evaluation, implementation of new instructional models, establishing benchmarks, amongst others. And then I, you know, one of the other things I do for fun is I look at what makes for an effective school committee. And I look at the things that the school committee is responsible for and it's, you know, working on a vision, standards, assessments, accountability, alignment, climate, collaborative partnerships, continuous improvement. And I look at that and the school improvement plan, I say, "Wow, you guys got a lot of work to do. There's a lot of responsibility, a lot of things to do." And so I ask myself, you know, "How did we get here with the school start time? How is it that it took years and every time it comes up, it sucks the air out of the room?" And I don't ask that question rhetorically. I think it should be part of your evaluation, your self-evaluation, when it comes time to evaluate the committee work. It's not part of the school improvement plan. It's a subcategory of a subcategory of what an effective board would do. And so I think the time allocated to this has been disproportionate. I know a lot of research has been talked about and the effectiveness of school start times, but very strong rigorous research in terms of third-grade reading, transitions from fifth to sixth grade, from eighth to ninth grade. Huge areas that show if these issues aren't addressed, kids actually drop out of school. A lot of time, energy, and resources should be allocated towards lifting our district out of Level Three status. So there's a lot of stuff to be done. So I encourage you to please make a decision. Get on with the business of governing our district, but let's hope that the passion and the community engagement can stick around. Thanks.
Thank you. The next speaker is Steve Harrell.
I wish I could give them free ice cream, but they changed.
I never talked about that.
Don't think I can do it. Did you push the starter yet?
I'm waiting for you to start, Steve.
I think I've seen you all somewhere before. I'm ready.
Okay. Proceed.
Good evening. My name is Steve Harrell and I live at 474 Elm Street. In addition to what we heard at the last school committee meeting, the superintendent recently said in his blog, quote, "Our administrative team remains resolute in their unanimous support of leaving the start times as is." This aroused my curiosity. It aroused my curiosity because at the same meeting, we heard Principal Nancy Athas stand right at this podium and say, "You have to know I support later start, given the fact I've worked on it for four years. I think it's important what the research says." Then Principal Leslie Wilson said, "The administrative team really does support. We understand the research and we do support the late start time at the high school." Of course, they both added that they cannot support an earlier start at JFK, but that's not the point here. These two important members of the administrative team don't sound like they are definitively opposed to later starts. Next, I thought about JFK Assistant Principal Sal Canata. I worked with him on the superintendent's School Start Hours Committee in 2008. I specifically remember Sal expressing clear support for a change, making reference to both the research and his own experience. Also, at the high school, I participated in small meetings several times with Assistant Principal Brian Lombardi, along with Nancy Athas and Renee Wetstein. Brian was always plainly in favor of a later start time. He was working on logistics with Nancy and was ready to cooperate to help with the change. I also wondered why the elementary principals and others on the team would be resolutely opposed. How familiar are they all with the issues and the evidence? Maybe actually it's all about some internal politics, but I sincerely hope this would not guide a decision about what's best for the students. Fortunately, it's not in the hands of the administrative team. In the school committee's policy manual, in the Powers and Duties section, it says, "The committee is responsible for the development of policy as guides for administrative action." Note, it does not say the administrative team is responsible for the development of policy. And in the school committee's Code of Ethics, it says, "A school committee member should realize that his/her primary responsibility is to the children." It does not say that the member's primary responsibility is to the administrative team. It says to the children. In fact, in the entire policy manual, there is not one reference about the establishment of the team or description of its role. Therefore, I ask you to think about what our children need and not about the reported position of the administrative team. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Zach Dietz.
Hi. My name is Zach Dietz. I live on 222 Elm Street. I think it can be said that throughout the last, like, five or so years, everything that can be said about the school start time has been said at this podium. So I'm not really going to tell you the facts right now. I mean, it's obvious a later start time would help the students. You all know that. And, I mean, starting at NHS this year, I'm a freshman. It's really been the first time that I can say I hate school and, really, the first time ever, I've just been sad constantly. And I'm tired all the time. I have headaches. It's really just not nice. And, I mean, I don't hate school because of the work or because it's hard. I don't hate it because I don't like learning, because I love to learn. But I hate it because just when I'm at school, it really feels like torture, the way my body feels. And when at night, every night, I don't want to go to bed because I get an energy burst. I want to do stuff then. At night, I can do my homework, but I know if I'm doing my homework at night, that means I'm going to be so painfully tired in the morning when I try to wake up and it's just going to make the rest of my day horrible until I get that energy burst at night. So I'm forced in this, like, catch-22 situation. If I follow my body, what it's telling me to do, I can't live up to the way that the school hours are forcing me to do. And, I mean, I really just hate it, honestly. I feel depressed and this is the first time in my life that I've felt that way. So I'm really begging you guys to make a change. Please, later, the school start time at, like, any means necessary. And as to the idea that if you guys vote it down today, that it's not going to, it's just going to end there, there is, like, a whole sea of crazy moms out there and crazy parents who will never, ever let it end. They will take it to their graves. So do the right thing, end this tonight, and please, later, start time for the students.
Thank you, Zach. Next up, one of those crazy moms, Renee Wetstein.
You only got three minutes. Don't I get an extra minute? Okay. You should, like, do the-- wait, you know what? Don't time it yet. But I was thinking, Obama needs you for all the debates. You are so good at this three minutes.
Okay.
Ready?
Okay. And again, just for the audience at home, this is Zach's mom. So that was the reference to crazy mom, so. Okay.
Renee Wetstein, 222 Elm Street. I'm urging you tonight to vote yes for an 8:30 a.m. start time for the North Hampton High School and a bus pickup time that makes the most sense for our students that stay extra for help, need a quiet place to do homework in the library, or who are doing sports and want to be involved in many clubs and offerings. Mr. Salsa had four advertised public forums this past year. Two were held at North Hampton High School, one at JFK, and one at Jackson Street Elementary School. All forums, four forums, were well-attended and were actually filmed. During the first forum, Mr. Salsa presented a shift in the high school time, but concluded that the cost would be about $180,000. The crowd was very disappointed that the plan presented by a school committee member was not vetted or analyzed by Mr. Salsa and his team. At the second meeting, Mr. Salsa incorrectly stated that the proposal for combining high school and elementary school busing was not possible because every bus holder required seat. After an op-ed letter, Mr. Salsa acknowledged that he was provided incorrect information and that indeed, we should provide busing on the number of students who actually take the bus, which is a lot less than the issued passes. Remember the high school buses? Passes of over 200 for the high school and only 121 were actually counted when we did the count. This year, I urged attendance to be taken on the buses, but it never happened. At the third forum, Mr. Salsa told the audience that he was disappointed that the last two forums didn't flesh out any new ideas or solutions. He even publicly criticized ideas I put in writing to him. Many parents pushed Mr. Salsa to have a meeting with all the right players to come up with a solution, with bus routes, times, et cetera, to come up with a plan. Mr. Salsa did not like that idea. Lo and behold, at the last forum, Mr. Salsa comes up with a plan that although not perfect because JFK would start 15 minutes earlier, but one that was acceptable to the advocates. Principal Wilson was not at that forum and the people that attended that forum thought that the proposal was discussed with the principals before Mr. Salsa made this proposal at the forum. During the last school committee meeting, many members expressed their concerns about negatively impacting JFK start time and the need for students to sleep. When Mr. Meyer suggested, "Why not an 8:30 a.m. start time?", did you consider that, Mr. Salsa? And that would not impact JFK start time, another member thought that was disrespectful. Well, I suggest that it is not disrespectful, but crucial to solve this problem that all of you have publicly expressed you wanted to fix. Mr. Salsa emailed me the day after the school committee meeting and wrote to me that the 8:30 a.m. start time will work and not impact the start time of the other schools, however, the pickup time is the problem. Well, the present 2:05 pickup is a problem now. And if we can solve the school start time issue by allowing our tired students to get an extra hour of sleep without adding more buses or more costs, and they will have the benefit of having time to stay after school to take AP help and a lot of the help that they do, I think we finally have a solution to our problem. Our children's health, welfare, and safety depend on it. I have two seconds left. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. That completes the public session signup list. Is there anyone else who didn't sign up who wishes to speak in the public comment session? Okay. Hearing none. We'll move on to the rest of the agenda. Are there--
I'm sorry.
Okay. If you could just state your name and address for the record.
Joy. Janie Ugoney, 35 Norfolk Avenue. I'm a terrible public speaker. I'm doing this because I love my kids. So I vote for proposal number three. I came last time at the meeting and I listened to every one of you and I thought you had some incredibly insightful things and I thank you for that. I feel like proposal number three is very reasonable. It's a start time that doesn't upset the sports too much, so kids get home too much later. It's a big help for after help because the kids can take their bus home. Although it is a small inconvenience with a 15-minute earlier start date for JFK, it's a short-lived inconvenience that I'm sure the students will be grateful for in high school. In terms of a possible risk of harmony between the two schools, I feel that, in terms of teamwork, I feel that the school committee, who we've all voted for, if you guys vote for this, I can't imagine that anything done for the welfare of our kids, which you will believe in if you vote for it, wouldn't bring a cohesiveness and true teamwork to everybody involved. On behalf of our kids, which is why we're all here, I would love for you to start that time a little later. My kids are both challenged with learning styles and they work so hard. They're up till at least 11, 11:30. My daughter made high honors last year and it's an all-out family effort. When they have to get up that early and go to bed that late, it's a workout. And for all of us who run businesses, we have probably, we have two businesses in our family and maybe one too many sometimes, but it's a lot. And I can tell you that probably sometimes the parents that aren't coming to these meetings, they're overloaded. They're overworked. Some people who are afraid to change, they're just afraid to change because we finally get our fragile little systems in place and we're afraid to make a change because it takes so much work to do that. But I guarantee you, this small change, which, by the way, I have parents talking about change, who have children that went to JFK and now they're freshmen, and their kids are a wreck with waking up that much earlier. This proposal number three would bring the start times a little closer and in their favor as adolescents. It would be a smoother transition, which I didn't think of until my parent, these parents and friends of mine, discussed how exhausted and they are saying just what you're saying. Thank you for speaking up because the kids are a wreck. These are kids that are really motivated and they're exhausted and they're tired. They just don't want to get up that early. It comes just down to that. They just need a little bit more time, especially with the PSATs and SATs starting at 7:30. These are really valuable things for them to be sharp. I don't want to give my kids espresso in the morning. I really don't. And they are charged at night. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Hi. My name is Carrie Baker. I live at 65 Paradise Road and I have two sons, a 10th grader and an 8th grader. I wrote all of you and only heard back from two. Thank you, Blue and Howard. I appreciate it. I've come to all of these meetings but never said anything, so I figured this was maybe my last chance. We know that it's the best thing for our kids and I can say personally, my sons personally have really suffered from, my elder son, from having to wake up so early. You're a group of very smart people. You can figure it out, okay? Be a role model for our kids. Show how a group of smart people can figure out a problem. You know what the science says? You can figure it out. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Okay. Thank you all to everyone who spoke and we'll now move on to the rest of the agenda. Are there any announcements from school committee members? Okay. Okay. Mr. Moore? Okay, thank you all to everyone who, uh, who spoke and we'll now move on to the, uh, to the rest of the agenda. Are there any announcements from school committee members? Okay. Okay, Mr. Moore?
Um, it's a quick announcement regarding NCTV. I'm the school committee's board member on the NCTV board. There's going to be a celebration of uh, NCTV having its studios for five years at the high school. And uh, prior, it's really also, in addition to being at the high school for five years, it's also seen tremendous amount of growth, a lot more community involvement. The celebration is October 20th from 2:00 to 4:00 in the afternoon. Behind the high school, there will be food and speakers, including um, one high school student who's produced a film that you can actually see on the website if you'd like, as well as a chance to operate some of the really cool gear that they have at the um, station. So, from 2:00 to 4:00, Saturday, October 20th, food and an opportunity to um, operate expensive electronic devices.
Are there any other um, school committee announcements?
This is on the agenda for later.
Okay. So, um, while it's, it's not on the agenda, um, it normally would be, but we wanted to just announce that we are joined this evening by Sarah Moss Horowitz and Alex Rifkin, who are our two new student representatives to the school committee. Uh, so we welcome you both. And I believe they're going to sort of deliver a joint report this evening uh, in honor of their first meeting.
So, we'd like to thank everybody for us being here. We're very excited. We're both seniors this year, so it's a big year for us. Um, this is a very stressful time. In October, we have a lot of college stuff going on, so we are very stressed. But in terms of the entire school, there's a lot of good things going on right now. One of the big things is Booster Week, which is starting uh, next week with a Powderpuff game, which is a giant uh, football game between the seniors and the junior uh, girls. And so it's a fun time for the school to kind of come together, represent your grade. We'll have games throughout uh, the week of the 22nd through lunch. It's just a little school activity where we get to build spirit throughout of uh, all the grades and it's just a time to kind of relax, get some of the stress out, and enjoy the school rather than just doing homework all the time. We have this relaxing period of a week. It is a good time. It is a little break um, before October, uh, end of October and kind of just release some of that stress. Also, another thing I want to mention quickly is, um, at this time, this week, we have a exchange program going on with the um, with a school in Norway, which we've been doing for the last uh, three years, and it's a very good program. It sends 14 of our students over to Norway uh, for two weeks for them to learn about culture and politics over there. And this week and part of next week, those students are here on exchange. The 14 students from Norway at the school are here learning about all po- uh, our school, politics, culture. They'll be watching the debate uh, next week, the presidential debate. So, fun stuff like that. And today, they actually got to go to Boston and explore some of the history there. So, it's a good time for us, on a good program that's been going on where we have this culture exchange and uh, definitely a good learning experience that has been going on for the last three years.
Um, and other things going on, uh, we, you may have heard about the Black Box Theater, um, which we have a parent, a lot of parents and also Mr. Eldridge have put a lot of time and, and money into it. Um, there were some problems. We had, it was flooded, but we're working on getting it back together 'cause we have quite a few student productions um, that are be, are actually being auditioned for right now. So, that's exciting. Um, the musical, Alice in Wonderland, Lady and Maxime's. So, that's exciting for the spring. Um, in terms of clubs, um, we have, we have a lot of clubs at our school. Um, and recently, a lot of them have been very active and been doing some really interesting stuff. The Robotics Club was um, in the news a lot last year and they're doing it again this year, even though um, we have a change in advisor, but um, they're, they're working on things again. Also, Model UN um, is going, is pretty active. Um, we're going to some conferences. Stand.
Yeah, Stand is uh, one of the groups on and it's to help raise awareness about genocide. And this year, we're focusing on Syria and the issues over there. We're trying to get speakers um, and hopefully assembly to kind of build knowledge about that. But I've also like to say that uh, both me and Sarah can agree that as freshmen, we were not really, well, kind of, we didn't participate that much in these clubs. And this year, it is astounding how many freshmen and underclassmen in general have taken up these opportunities and it's a great thing. And it shows how much, how unified the school is that when we were freshmen, we really didn't know that much about these clubs or didn't really talk too much about uh, kind of uh, talk with the upperclassmen and with advisories that have been going on for the last two years and these uh, freshmen joining clubs. It is very, very unified and we have, I've gotten to know a lot of the new freshmen that have come in. It's only been a month now, uh, but a lot of them have come in and made the transition nicely from the middle school to the high school in terms of this uh, culture and uh, kind of this group setting. So, I think it's, it's been a good month for them and hopefully that continues throughout their high school stay.
Um, so those are just a few of the clubs. Um, and then also advisory groups. Um, so, as I'm sure you guys know, um, we have new advisory groups and so um, we've had two meetings so far. Um, and now it's a little bit different. They rotate throughout the day. Um, we're kind of playing around with how that works out. Um, and they are, new freshmen are integrated into groups, which is, it's, 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 it's a very cool thing because you have a group of people that um, is kind of oddly assorted and gets to know each other and new freshmen, they're kind of integrating to that. Um, and we just want to highlight that one of our um, next topics is academic integrity. So, we're, we're trying to address more serious issues. So.
Excellent. Thank you both for that report and we'll look forward to having the both of you joining us throughout the rest of the season, the school year. Okay. So, we'll now move on to um, the consent agenda, recommended actions under the consent agenda. Uh, we have the approval of the minutes of the school committee at Alt Retreat, August 1st, 2012. Uh, and the school committee, school committee meeting Thursday, September 10th, 2012.
That's September 13th.
Uh, excuse me, September 13th. In terms of contracts, we have one contract, which I should have pulled out here in advance. I'll move on uh, while I find that. We have field trip requests. We have NHS WGBH-TV Boston, Saturday, November 3rd, 2012. Um, we have a Leeds Nature's Classroom trip to Beckett, Mass., November 6th through the 9th of 2012. We have NHS uh, New York City Broadway trip, November 28th, 2012. We have NHS Vermont Pre-History Academic Tournament um, in December 7th, 2012. We have a JFK trip to New York City Broadway, April 10th, 2013. Uh, we have NHS trip to Washington DC, May 2nd through the 5th, 2013. And we have a JFK uh, French class trip to Montreal in Quebec, Canada, May 24th through the 26th of 2013. Under contracts, um, we-
Like three of them.
We have-
Three of them have been canceled.
Okay. Okay, so um, we have eight on the list in front of us. Uh, do you want to just-
There's contracts?
There's, there's two changes.
Okay.
There's eight contracts on the list. Uh, the third one up from the bottom that says Northeast Foundation for Children. We had incomplete information come back to us. So, therefore, you do not, you will not be seeing that contract tonight, so I have pulled that from the list due to incomplete uh, information. And the, uh, the second one from the bottom, the Clark HVAC Services. The initial amount was $25,575. Uh, when you receive this, Central Services uh, was unable at that time to give the proper split between the city portion of the HVAC and the school portion. The school portion um, is $16,075 and the, the balance is the, the city. So, those are the only two changes. One contract being pulled and a change-
So, I'll read through them again.
The Clark HVAC.
You'll just need to tell me that total 'cause I, I'm not that good a mathematician. So, the, the contracts that are before us are the Neptour Benson Contract uh, for $7,551.50. This is for, related to the JFK pool. G. Howson Contract for $25,000. Uh, this is bottled water and juice products. LV, uh, LPVAC, $24,000 for Medicaid Municipal Reimbursement. Chandra Phi, $10,000 of student translations for Khmer Cambodian. The Collaborative for Educational Services, $2,880. And skipping down Century Consultants, $22,236. And then the Clark HVAC Services Contract, which you just described.
For $16,075.
Okay. So, those are all of the contracts, field trips and minutes under the consent agenda. I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion to approve as presented and seconded.
Okay. Ms. Minnick.
Could you please talk to me about Lower Pioneer Valley Educational Collaborative, Medicaid Municipal-
We should remove that from the consent agenda then, uh, and pull it from the consent agenda so that we can vote on the consent agenda, then we can take it. So, if you'd like to move to remove that from the consent agenda.
Yes, I move that. I just have a question about it.
Okay.
I have a question on the $25,000 for the water and the juice.
So, we'll remove that from the consent agenda. So, then we'll, the consent agenda, oh.
I move that, we remove the Nature's Classroom Field Trip from the consent agenda? I have a question on that.
Okay.
I'm sorry, but I'd like to remove the minutes of the last September 13 meeting for the consent agenda.
Okay. Is, uh, is there anything left of the consent? Okay, so um, with those items removed and we'll pull them out for, for discussion at the regular meeting, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda as amended, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, okay. And just for those watching at home, the purpose of the consent agenda is that all of these items are to be sort of researched and vetted beforehand and we can take a single vote on them. But obviously, there's some still remaining questions. So, uh, so the consent agenda passes. Why don't we then, um, a little bit of out of order and then take up each of the individual items? So, the first item, why don't we take up the contracts? Uh, the bottled water contract, bottled and juice contract for $25,000. You had a question about that?
I do have a question for, um, somewhere I recall, going back with bottled water and the plastic and trying to keep it out of our schools and trying to keep it for the green issue. And I just, I'm wondering about $25,000 for bottled water and then the juice. I mean, are we reimbursed for that? And what's the cafeteria program? I mean, that just seems like a lot.
The contract uh, with G. Howson is a combination contract uh, for Smith Vocational, their culinary program, Smith Vocational, their cafeteria program, and our cafeteria program at North Hampton Public Schools. Uh, we capped a contract at $25,000 for water and juices uh, as we see fit as they meet the needs within the program. So, this is very similar to what we have done in the past. Uh, we share this contract with them. We both order off of it. We're not committed to the $25,000. We could order 5,000 if that's all we wanted to do.
But why are we buying water? I mean, why not push for water bottles and fill it up out in the hall and I mean, we're putting a lot of money into our water plant as far as I'm concerned and I was wondering-
I, I can't answer that question. I don't know. Uh, they, they buy bottled water. The, the, the students take the bottled water. They drink the bottled water. They, you know, they take water from home, but-
I understand that. I just thought at some point, I, I, was it here or might it have been, 'cause I watched the meetings, was it the city council?
I, $17 cents a bottle for a dollar.
Bottled water and getting-
It's been, it's come up year after year here. Um, it's, uh, at least seven, at least nine years ago, every year, I think. And um, it's just one of those, it's, it's been here. And we've, we've talked about it. We've, we've, lots of us have advocated getting rid of it or-
And we never did? I thought that we did at some point. But I thought we got, we're getting rid of the, the bottled water because of, also because of the green effect of the having the plastic and you can get water right out there. Twenty-five, $25,000 when you have a tight budget, that could be a good person.
My guess is they're buying it for $17 a bottle wholesale and selling it to the students for more, so.
So, we're gonna be making profit off of this?
I assume so, yeah. I mean-
This would be part of those programs, yes.
So, we're gonna be making a profit off of this?
Yes. I can't tell you by product line or by the individual item, but it goes into the food program. We get reimbursement for what we buy. This is one of the expenses that's part of the food service overall program.
So, exclusive of the juices, let's just say um, it is $17 a bottle, $0.20 a bottle and that's five, I mean, are we selling it for like a dollar a bottle or something? Are we making five times profit? Is this a profit or is it just like selling water?
I can't tell you what the profit is because uh, I don't have that information in front of me or the, the, the amount of volume that makes up the $25,000. They have this um, in order for us to buy from them. And we know based on past experience, um, the volume that we have purchased, they have looked at collectively uh, what's been consumed and what we've needed in the past. And this is how they've come up with this contract amount.
Okay, and another question, is it going into like the um, vending machines at the high school and also, or is it just?
I can't tell you how they split them up once they receive the product. I can't tell you where they're being put. All I know is they're being sold within the school, but I can't tell you what's being put, what size or uh, what quantity is being put into machines or what's being sold right there in the food service line. I, I don't have that.
Okay, but we are splitting it with Smith Voc and JFK and the high school?
No, the culinary program at Smith Vocational. 'Cause their program, their culinary piece of this is totally different and run independently than their cafeteria program, just like our cafeteria program.
The other contract was the collaborative contract that you had a question about?
Correct. Does the Medicaid reimbursement come to the school department or does it go to the city?
Medicaid, uh, this, this $24,000, this $24,000 is the fee we pay to the collaborative for their-
To collect it. And I want to know where the money they collect goes. I think it goes to the city.
We, we get uh-
And I don't know if the city gives it to us, is what I'm asking, I think.
Well, we have a Medicaid account that we, we use and we charge expenses off to. That comes back to us.
It does come back.
Yes. Because if you look, if you looked in the um, the budget package, I believe there was I'm thinking up close to $250,000, $275,000 in the Medicaid account. And this is a contract for their services to apply for that.
It was, it was previously done by Learning for Educational Services, formerly HECC.
Okay.
Um, a long time ago. And before that, the district did it itself. I understand at some point in time when they were applying for the reimbursements, that they came back into the city and I was just asking if those reimbursements then get to the school department.
Okay. We have an account for that.
Or if they stay in the city coffers, do you, that's, if you follow what I'm saying. It's sort of like charter school stuff, you know, and some of the other things on-
No, it doesn't, it doesn't reside. We have a separate account for that as one of our funds. Like, we have choice, we have Medicaid, we have grants. Those are part of the monies.
So, we do get it.
We do get that.
Okay. So, was there any other contracts? I couldn't remember the other two. There was two contracts. Okay, so those, that, so then there was a question about Nature's Classroom.
Just a process issue. We're given these documents to inspect, I suppose, to evaluate and make a decision. But I'm looking at the Nature's Classroom. The second page says, "Any student with life-threatening food allergies." Yes is clearly checked. I think I can see EpiPen, but I can't make out anymore and I certainly wouldn't want to go into court with me pretending to make out EpiPen. Same thing with any students with special, any students with health, health issues, yes. The line is completely legible. So, again, I don't, I don't doubt that the school personnel are gonna take proper action to ensure that student with a life-threatening food allergy is safe. But if I'm going to vote to approve this forum, I'd just like to be clear.
Do you know what the procedure is? So, the, the field trip gets sent to, presented eventually for his approval to bring to us for, for us to vote on. But does a copy go to like to the school nurse and does she pull the file and then?
They go over the health issues of each student that's going and they provide the proper medical support for the students while they're there. That's our responsibility.
I'm not, I'm not doubting that that's happening. It's just, it seems, it seems nonsensical to present me with this, so I can't read it. So, I just want to make, you know, for future reference, if we just make sure that if we're gonna be copied online, all these, that they're legible.
It appears that the online version is a little bit less legible than the-
Right, yeah. Right, yeah.
Yeah, it's harder to read.
Yeah, that's, it's a minor issue, just for, it's just a process issue.
Okay, were there other, was there another field trip question? Okay, so then the final issue, question was about the minutes.
Yes, um, this is the minutes of Thursday, September thirteenth, twenty-twelve, um, item number three B for the board, I'd like to amend it. That I said that it allows parents who are on the school committee to advocate for their kids and that anybody in that situation has to do, do things, they have to follow the same procedures as every other parent who advocates for their kids and that they, as because you're on the school committee, you have to file a notice at the city clerk's office of the times and people with whom you've advocated. Because it currently just sort of reads as though it's something I have to do, it's something that everybody, actually, everybody works for the schools, everybody who works for the city has to do, um, if they advocate for their children within the schools and they're in any position of authority over any of the people with whom they're advocating.
So could you suggest, is there some slight amendment that you could?
Well, it's really just to kind of replace that with, it allows parents who are on the school committee, as an insert was there, to advocate for their kids and, um, and allows any, and requires any other parent in that situation to follow the same procedures as every other parent and to file a notice at the city clerk's office, which is what it says there.
So there's a motion to amend the minutes of September thirteenth, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion of those amendments? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, okay. So then.
Can I make a motion to vote on all four things?
Yes.
So the, um, so I move that we approve the amended minutes of September thirteenth, that we approve the, um, field trip to Nature's Classroom from East School, and then the two contracts, one for, um, and the other was for the bottled water.
I'd like to leak the bottled water out.
So you'd like to take a separate.
I'd still leak that, I could keep that separate.
So I could take that and just move the approval of the other three.
Second?
Second, okay. So, um, all those in favor of approving those items, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, so then finally, I would entertain a motion on the twenty-five thousand dollar contract for bottled water and juices.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion on that? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye, nay.
Any abstentions? Okay, so, uh, that, that is also adopted. Okay, so we'll now return to the regular agenda. The first item is under reports and recommendations, we have an update on the corrective action plan under special education, and we'll recognize Lori Farkas.
She is also giving the report on special education.
That's correct.
I was actually unaware about doing the corrective action plan, and I apologize for that, I can report on that at the next meeting.
Next month.
Okay.
So just, so then just a report on special education?
Yes. Thought I could see it without my glasses, maybe not. So I have been in the district for about seven weeks at this point, and I just wanted to share some of my first impressions around the strengths and the areas that I see that are in need of growth in both special education, the education of English language learners, and, um, those, those two main areas, oh, and early childhood. In special education, I've really thrilled to find all the variety of programs in the dis, that are within the district that serve to keep students with more significant or very specialized group of special needs in our schools, and that's an incredibly important thing from my perspective. In addition, we have a lot of great, strong faculty in the special education department and a very active and involved group of parents, which offer a lot of feedback and support to the programs. And I think North Hampton is unique and fortunate in that way because not all districts have involved and supportive parents. The areas, and there's one theme throughout all of my, um, discussion and all of my findings in terms of areas of growth, and that is to have a greater sense of what the big picture is in terms of both our staffing picture and our fiscal, sense of fiscal responsibility. Because once we have that, we can serve all children within the district more effectively. In addition, I, I look forward to in the next year, more clearly defining our internal programs, both in terms of how students can access those, access pieces of those, and how they move back into a more integrated setting. In addition, I'm looking forward to a lot of staff training with faculty, with all faculty, and special education faculty in particular, around all of those issues, but more so, I'm excited to work with, um, regular education faculty, mainstream faculty, however you want to refer to that, so all staff know how to work best with students with a variety of learning needs and approaches to learning, as well as how to monitor the progress of those students. In terms of English language learners, um, we have, we are so fortunate in New England to have a really varied cultural makeup of our schools, and, um, coming from other districts where they're not as fortunate to have that, I see that really celebrated in our schools in many ways. Our teachers also have a strong commitment, from my impressions, to include families who come to the, to the area or, um, to this country as, as new, um, new residents, and to include their cultures, make sure they understand our approaches to education, how our systems work. Again, the area of needed growth that I see is how, holding the big picture, understanding where our needs are, understanding how to meet those needs in a way that serves students well and is also physically responsible. In addition, we have a whole new set of regulations, curriculum, and, um, and training pieces for faculty or for all educators that we will be working on and, and accessing and training all the staff in the district. In early childhood, our, my last major area of responsibility, um, we have one, a major great strength, and not to name a particular person, but Barbara Black is respected in, at, at an incredible level throughout the state, actually. Having done early childhood education in my last two districts, um, her name is, I mean, she sits with great respect, um, from all early childhood educators and at meetings that are statewide. So I, I just wanted to recognize that we are so fortunate to have her here. And again, I look forward to how, getting a sense of the big picture and how we can serve some very involved children in, in the best way possible so they get the best advantage early on, which we know, research, um, really sets children up to be included in the long run. Just seeing if I forgot anything. So, um, my next steps are really two-fold in terms of my own professional goals in the district. One is to focus on the, and it's shared with one of our district improvement goals, is to focus on the inclusion of fifth and sixth graders in math instruction, and to, um, work with special educators, um, regular ed teachers in figuring out how we can do that through co-teaching or the, whatever variety of ways that we figure that out. And, um, I share that goal with, um, with Brian, and I will also be sharing that goal with, um, the principals at JFK, Ryan Road, and Jackson Street. My other goal, my other administrative goal goes back to the, my, my main theme around looking at our management and operations, essentially, and our procedures, our routines, our systems, we're putting systems in place where they ha, they aren't currently, um, maintaining a sense of fiscal responsibility to all the students in the district, and, as well as responsibility to laws and policies, which is special education and early childhood, and, uh, English language learners are not short of, and, um, then making sure that our staff are continually involved in training and their own professional development so we can keep and improve the highest, um, standard of faculty. And again, I apologize for not having the update on the, um, on the, um, our, our, I'm sorry.
Corrective Action Plan.
Our corrective action plan, but I will have that to you. Any questions?
Ms. Pick and Mr. Flynn?
Thank you, just a short question. You said that in the, um, the focus on the inclusion of fifth and sixth graders in math, and you've targeted two of the elementary schools, why, why those two, not all four?
I just asked which elementary principals wanted to join with me in that, um, in that SMART goal, it's, it's part of the new evaluation of administrators, and so I'm, to not take on a huge, um, scope, I'm trying to be successful with a few areas of focus. I asked for volunteers.
Mr. Flynn?
The last month I had given to the board, I mean, just got back in, one of the things that did come up as a concern was, um, the, like, the, I guess, communication and, um, games for phone calls, I'm not sure, and you mentioned about putting routines and procedures in there, is that an effort to address some of these concerns so that we'll have a smoother operation with the information and tightening up procedures?
Yes, I've already met with the pack once, we have a monthly meeting set up, we have an initial parent rights meeting set up as well as a meet and greet. We, uh, we had a really good start, and I'll be handing out next week, when I meet with them, a, um, form that Barbara Black actually made up for early childhood families and families of, um, of English language learners, um, kind of the special education, um, communication lines as well as, um, terms just explained in a, in a more straightforward manner. And also I've talked a lot in, I've met with all staff once, and I'm on my second round of working with staff, and I've talked a lot about our responsibility to families in terms of communication and our relationships. Sure.
Questions are coming, Mr. Ball?
I have a question, um, back, um, what was, Ms. Pick, something about, um, the inclusion of fifth and sixth grade math instruction, and JFK, how does that, how, how do you plan that working, I mean, is it the fifth graders within each building and the sixth graders? And, because we just implemented a, um, a comprehensive math program, so I'm just wondering how that all works, you know, like, drawn out on paper. My daughter's a fifth grader at Ryan Road School, so I'm wondering, is that gonna affect her this year, does it go into effect next year?
Well, we already include the vast majority of fifth and sixth graders in a regular ed classroom for all who are learned, and, um, and so what we're working on is looking at how to train, um, both regular ed and special ed teachers how to do co-teaching, um, when students would be, typically be pulled out. So it won't affect or change the vast majority of what students experience now, but it may add in, um, two teachers into the classroom who, which would give students, some students, alternative ways to approach a particular concept or topic or practice, um, from two different perspectives, and from one person who is trained in working with students that have a variety of needs. So again, it's seven weeks I've been here, and, um, and this is something I'll be working towards throughout the year.
I'll just add to that, the goal is to have more students in the regular education classroom, and when we add students with special needs into the regular ed classroom, we want to offer more support for them while they're in there.
So is that going to be in the, of the teach, of somebody who's trained in one of the, the.
That's part of the goal.
Department then?
Right, professional development for the teachers so that we can have us be a successful co-teaching model for fifth and sixth grade, which is also on our district improvement.
So it doesn't have to do with the two fifth graders at Ryan Road having to do anything of co-teaching together? It's actually somebody who's.
Oh, right, no.
Coming in.
Special ed and.
Right, well, the reason I'm asking is because my daughter came home and asked about that.
It's a very good question.
She said, you know, we should be, somebody had discussed about talking about the two teachers co-teaching and changing classes, and I hadn't really heard about that, and I was wondering if this had anything to do with that.
That's, that's a different model that I could talk with you about at another time.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Minnick?
I was gonna just say, congratulations on surviving the seven weeks so far. I know, I know it's jumping in with both feet and, and so, um, I was just going to mention that I am the North Hampton representative to the board at the Collaborative for Educational Services here in North Hampton, and they have an excellence center for English language education, and I hope that if you ever get to a place where you need assistance, that you will look toward the collaborative for that.
I've worked with Debbie a lot.
Okay, great, yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, thank you very much. Okay, the next, um, item is an update, uh, this is on the MEASK and AP results, and this is from Chris Brennan. Mr. Brennan?
I start with the AP results first. I thought what I would do is give you a little bit of historical context for all the data, and maybe a fast run through some statistics and I'll, and, uh, some chief of the more statistics at the end, but, uh, just a little historical background. When I started teaching AP English at the high school in nineteen eighty-eight, there were two-hundred-and-fifty-four students in the senior class, and we had one AP Lit class with twenty-two students in it that represented eight percent of the total. This year, we have two-hundred-and-thirteen in the senior class, we're offering four sections of AP, we have a hundred-and-nine students, which represents fifty-one percent of the class. I think you can see that our move away from exclusivity to inclusivity, our way from, our move from elitism to egalitarianism, and adopting the concept that if you open the door, invite them in, and encourage them, they thrive. And I think it's proven in the statistics that I'm about to show you. Last year, in two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twelve year, sixty-three percent of our upperclassmen, juniors and seniors, were enrolled in an AP class, that is number eight in the state for, uh, percentage of upperclassmen. This year, we added five percent onto that, this year we have three-hundred-and-eight students who will take a total of five-hundred-and-ninety-one exams, and it represents sixty-eight percent of our upperclassmen. That's a one-year growth of five percent, I don't know if we can keep doing this. Since two thousand and eight, we've increased the number of students taking AP courses, that's students now, not exams, from a hundred-and-ninety to three-hundred-and-eight, that's a two-hundred-and-eight two percent increase. Last year, eighty-one percent of the students who took an AP class, that's all courses, not just math, science, and English, um, I just want to make sure, eighty-one percent of all of the students who took an AP course earned a qualifying score. Qualifying score is a three, four, or five, which is, we'll get the students credit in many colleges and universities. many colleges and universities. Just for a comparative statistic, in Massachusetts, 74% of students who took exams got a qualifying score. And globally, only 61% of students who took AP exams scored a qualifying score. Last year, 78% of the students earned a qualifying score, three are greater on AP exams in math, science, and English. And I mention that because the MIMZI grant that we're part of, they only fund us and provide professional development in that, the math, science, and English areas. So I think it's worth sort of culling that statistic out. Last year, 78% of students earned a qualifying score, three or greater on 400 AP, 408 AP exams in math, science, and English. In 2008, 177 earned a three or better, so we've had 131% increase in five years. That's since we joined MIMZI. The next thing I'd give you is just a few statistics about qualifying scores and how we rank in the state with other public and private high schools. In, in English Language and Composition, that's our junior AP course, we are second in the state for qualifying scores. Last year, Sue Crago, the teacher of all four sections of that class, was named in Massachusetts Teacher of the Year for the Science Initiative sponsored through MIMZI. She got a free trip to Washington DC and met our representatives and senators. In English Literature and Composition, our senior class, we're number three in the state of Massachusetts. In, as I told you before, in 1988, we offered a section. We've got four sections and this year, we are running four sections. Again, 51% of the senior class will participate, we're number three in the state. English combined, if you take the English Language and the English Lit courses, we actually come out number two in the, in the state, only second to the Boston Latin High School, which has a population of close to 1,700 students. We have about 950. So I think that's something to be proud of. In the science courses, we're number seven in the state in chemistry. Sue Biggs, the chemistry AP teacher, also received the Massachusetts Award and she too went along with Sue Biggs, with Sue Crago and they went to Washington DC and met peers from all around the country who are equally valued in their states. Another great statistics about, about Sue Biggs, our environmental science scores are number three in the state. We don't even teach the course. She teaches it as a add-on to her chemistry class at the end of the semester. Just prepares them for the test in a period of about three weeks and we had the third highest qualifying scores in the state. Physics, number four. AP Science combined, number seven in the state. So it's, it's just a, it's a fantastic program and I think what we should be proudest of are the statistics that I'm going to give you next because I think these say something about the inclusivity and egalitarian nature of our program. And I'd also like to, to make a point of saying that I think the district deserves credit. I mean, it's great that, you know, I teach a class and I get to, get to teach some of the best and the brightest and these kids who are highly motivated and work really hard, come to Saturday sessions. Many of them give up nine Saturdays over a school year to come to Saturday sessions, but it's the whole district that is teaching these kids. They come to me well-prepared. They got a great foundation and we shouldn't get all the credit, those of us who teach the classes. I think all the teachers should, should be praised. Now, here's, here's the, the numbers that I especially like. In 2008, we had four students who were low-income qualifying. That means, you know, they were receiving free or reduced lunch and they got their exams for free from the college board. In 2012, we had 29, which is a 625% increase in total number of students taking and receiving qualifying scores. Actually, more students took exams, but the qualifying score is not a standout. African-American Hispanic students with qualifying scores, math, science, and English. In 2008, we had three. Last year, we had 10. That's a 230% increase. Actually, 2010 was a better year. We had 13. I don't know what happened to those three kids, but I think that the two, over 200% increase is still great. And then the final stat that I think is very telling about the quality of our science program at the high school is females earning qualifying scores in math and science courses. In 2008, 18 young women scored a qualifying score in their math or a science course. Last year, 79 scored qualifying scores. That's a 339% increase in the young women taking math and science courses, courses that 20 years ago were dominated by young men. And I think it, it speaks a great deal about the quality of, of that program and those teachers who really encouraged our young men to take math and science classes. Just as a point of interest for you, I know you probably, most of you read the Gazette article, but I would also encourage you to read last Saturday's Sunday Globe magazine. There's an article in here called "The AP Trap" and it talks a little bit about AP overload. This trend is happening all over the state. We're the only school from western Massachusetts that's mentioned in here and it's not in a negative way at all, but the, the article does raise some concerns about kids perhaps overfilling their schedules with AP courses at the expense sometimes of art, music, some important classes that we think a school student should graduate from high school with. So that's my AP numbers and I'll pass around a, the rest of the data. It's too much to go through.
Mrs. Minnick.
I just want to comment, you said that this wasn't just the AP teachers that deserved the credit, but rather all the faculty in the, in the district that prepares them. But I do want to say that I can, I, I don't think that you're taking the test for the kids and I don't think that you're solely responsible for this, but I do remember a few years back when you came to the school committee and suggested that we needed to enhance the rigor of our high school curriculum. And so I think you and a few of your colleagues were instrumental in moving us where we are, so thank you for that.
That was quite a few years ago. I don't recognize a lot of faces here, yeah. This is my second go-round as assistant principal and I think I did it, did it back then, but it clearly, you know, it shows that if you, if you really encourage kids.
Well, yeah, I mean, I think we-
Rather than saying, you know, only the best, only the brightest, only the upper-middle-class, only, you know, people of a certain demographic take these classes. I mean, we've proven that that's not true.
I think it's very true that people perform at the level that's expected of them and you introduced us to the concept that we had some kids that could do it if we invited them and expected them.
The thing that's interesting about our joining of the brand also is in 2008, this program was already pretty robust. To start off with 179 kids taking AP courses, I think the, one of the reasons that MIMZI wanted us is that we, we sort of brought some pretty good stats with us to begin with and I don't think they ever expected that it would compound on itself the way it happens and I think we should be proud of, we should be proud of our staff.
For these numbers, you, you went through the list of what we're second in the state and seventh and all that, is that something you're going to hand out to us?
Yeah, I have all the, I have, and I have a lot. I mean, there's a lot of data that you can call from both the college board site and the MIMZI site, but I do have a handout. I didn't get it together fast enough to have it in your packets, but to share it.
Mr. Moore.
I just have a, I'm curious to find out about the Common Core and AP classes. I know that we're required to teach, maybe all of our classes have to sort of conform to the Common Core, make sure they touch on the things that are there. Is that, is this another issue in terms of alignment because it's a different sort of test and everything else?
Well, I think, I think students who are taking AP courses are going to be very qualified to take any sort of park exam at the end of, what will replace the, the past test. These are kids who are challenged every day. I mean, we teach these classes as though they are a freshman or sophomore in a college course and many kids come back to report to us that the courses that they took at Northampton High School are in fact more difficult in many cases than the courses they take at local colleges, including Smith College. They come back and say they're bigger and what was expected of them is at least that high. So I don't foresee any problem integrating this.
Any other questions? Mr. Zehowski.
Thank you. I, I know that the MIMZI grant is kind of coming to an end. Is that correct?
Yes.
And so you stated all these, these great statistics and with some of the grant being pulled away, is there a plan in place to kind of keep things moving forward because you were really excited about the 5% increase as all of us are? So we like to think that that could continue even though some of the supports-
Well, you know, one of the proven ways of supporting the program, one of the great things that the MIMZI grant has supplied us with is just excellent professional development. And I think here, when I start going through the DASK recommendations, one of the major recommendations that keeps coming out in their document is providing staff with professional development. Next week, I'm going to a two-day, we're, we're required to go to two out of three years. We're supposed to go to these two days. And I also did a summer, week-long professional development at the college. And those are the type of things that personally I'm worried we're not going to see. I don't know if the district is going to be able to come up with the funds and the, and the verithol to send all these teachers to ongoing professional development. Hopefully they will, because I certainly would like to go back. I'm still teaching a couple of those classes. I find the, the professional development much more valuable than most of the professional development received over the last 30 years.
Mr. Ball.
Well, I just wanted to say that, say that I know when I went to high school, most of my math and science teachers were men. And I think now that we have a lot more women, I think that there's also the, the modeling which just really comes about too, on top of the excellence that they, they want to be providing to, providing to the students. That's why I did this.
Right, and I, and I think the, I think it's a good model for both the young women and for the guys, for them to see, you know, a strong woman teaching, you know, a chemistry class or a physics, our physics class, that's a fantastic model for these kids. I know Harvard president lost his job over some of the comments he made about math and science and, and I think that our kids are getting the exact opposite message in our school.
Any other questions?
I think I'd like to answer a question that Zehowski asked. I think it's important, you asked a really good question, how do we keep this going? And then there's two important points of concentration to keep this going. The first, as Chris mentioned, is the professional development, the commitment to professional development is what we really thrive on. They love the opportunity to learn more, to be challenged, and to become better at their profession. So we have to keep those opportunities available for teachers because that's a real perk for teachers. Obviously, it's a great benefit for us. So we want to make sure that we can keep it going. And the second is that obviously we have very, very talented teachers in this district and we have to work to keep them here. You know, talented teachers with a wealth of professional development behind them. They become very attractive candidates for the district. And I think it's important for us to have a vision looking forward of how we keep other of those teachers here in the state. And so that will be part of our budget.
It probably wouldn't be that difficult to reduce me as an English teacher, but try to find an AP physics teacher in the state of Massachusetts. I think a couple of years ago, I remember there were only five certified teachers in physics graduated anywhere in the state. So it's, you know, they're, they're really hunted for. I think they've got headhunters up trying to steal them away from districts, so.
I just have a question. Do you know the percentage of Hispanics and blacks that we have? I mean, the little 3% increase to a 10% increase, I just wonder, out of how many-
Actually in the bill, you mean the total percentage? I don't have that, those numbers with me. I could get them for you.
I have the demographics front of me.
Yeah, I don't have a lot of them. This is, you know, welcome these, welcoming these students into these classes, I think that's where your, that's where your teachers who recognize, you know, a special spark in a kid or see a test, a PSAT test, for instance, and say, you know, there's, there's some data here that says you could do well in one of these classes and that's, that's how we use data to sometimes identify those who might otherwise fly on the radar if they're willing to take a chance.
Okay.
Okay, NEASC?
Yes, right.
What I thought I would do is just give you a little overview of where we are in the process right now. You know, that we had our visit in the spring, the re-accreditation team was here. What you have in your packets is an outline of the commendations and the recommendations that arrived.
I don't have it in my packet.
No. Okay. They were sent and just copied and she even, I'm sorry, she had it in your packet.
Sorry, I haven't seen it.
She even got an email back that the copies were all made and there you go.
Sorry about that.
Sorry.
Just continue, yeah.
I'll open it and I'll get the documents to you tomorrow.
It's okay, yeah.
So anyway, where we are in the, in the process is that we have received the initial report from NEASC and what you will have delivered to you is a packet that'll be an outline of the commendations and the recommendations that are included. And they're, they're divided, the report is divided by the standards and they're the same standards that we had a committee for each of the seven standards as we went through the process of self-study last year. And there are recommendations and commendations for all of those. I think it's important to realize that most of the recommendations that are in here that you will see, that I'll mention a couple of them, were developed correctly from self-study teachers and the staff at the school did along with the administration. These are things that we recognized in our own building, both our strengths and where we needed to work. What will happen next is that around Thanksgiving, you'll receive an official letter of notification of our, our standard, our status of accreditation. There's essentially three different statuses. First is accreditation that just requires a two-year progress report and then a five-year progress report. Second standard is an accreditation with a two-year progress report and some special reports and actions that they may ask us to perform. And then thirdly, there's accreditation based on warning with the one, all of the above, the two-year plans, some special plans, and some special highlighted recommendations and actions that were required to perform. What we have to do for the rest of this year is to reform a follow-up committee that'll probably be made up of the folks, the chairs of the various standards committee. They will prioritize the recommendations that would have been given after that. After we receive the letter in November, we may have to reprioritize some of those things based on what the NEASK people tell us. They may say, you've got to do these things right away and have to reprioritize it. And then by the end of the year, the follow-up committees have to submit status reports to the principal who then passes them along to the superintendent. I don't know, should I just mention a couple of the-
If you would, give us a few highlights.
What I, what I, what I'll do is, what I'd like to do is point out a number of what I call, you're doing a good job, but, pairings of some of the commendations and recommendations. I can do one for each of the five standards and I'll show you what I mean. For instance, in the, in the first standard, that's our core values and belief and learning expectation standards, the commendation says the school's core values and beliefs and 21st century learning expectations are actively reflected in the culture of the school, period. But the first recommend, but, in the first recommendation, it says, we need a plan to ensure familiarity with all aspects of the core values- with all aspects of the core values and beliefs and learning expectations throughout the community with emphasis on application of school-wide rubrics." So what they're basically saying is we need to further integrate this document that we've created with core values, et cetera, into every aspect of the curriculum, you know, our planning, everything. So it has to be fully integrated. You're doing a good job, but it needs to be fully integrated. In the second standard for curriculum, there's a nice commendation that we have availability of computer labs for class use. But we need to develop and fund a three-year strategic plan for technology, including school-wide internet installation, upgrade of all hardware, acquisition of mobile technology, formalization for outside device use, et cetera. Just as a sidelight sort of, well, evidence of this, when the MIMZI people sent me a PowerPoint of all of our fantastic AP results and statistics, I couldn't open it in the building because we don't have a PowerPoint that can do that in the building. They're two, I don't know...
Generations.
Two generations old, and it crashes the computers when you try to open them up. So that's what they're talking about. You've got the stuff, but everything needs to be upgraded and under instruction. They said, you know, we have informal collegial professional discourse about practice, but it happens informally. It's a commendation. But what you need to do is provide teachers with formal professional development opportunities and give them the opportunity to reflect and share their beliefs about work. So take an informal thing that happens haphazardly in the teacher's room during lunch and give us some time to do it in professional development opportunities. Assessment for student learning, we get commended for our proactive use of data to begin identifying gaps in ninth-grade student achievement. This is something that I worked on last year. Right after the first progress reports came out, I got a list of all the Ds and Fs, compared that to how the kids did at JFK, both on MCAS tests, and went there finally, worked hard, looked at JFK. We formed a group of teachers. It was amazing. All the ninth-grade teachers showed up after school for voluntary meetings to talk about these kids and to start to develop plans. Because our theory is, get these kids when they're freshmen, when they're starting to have problems, and you're going to solve a lot more problems along the, before we, the problems get bigger and the kids are missing credits, et cetera. So we use the data, but we need to implement a formal process to gather data from both current students, pro-secondary institutions, to inform our revision of curriculum, instruction, and assessment. So keep doing it, you need to, but you need to do it more. Move it from informal system to a formal system. And then the final one I'll mention has to do with heterogeneous grouping. They commended us for heterogeneous grouping of some core courses over a student's high school career, but under recommendations, they said, "We need to increase the development of more heterogeneous classes across all disciplines and professional development to support successful implementation of these." Because if you know, when you make courses more heterogeneous, it involves teaching, you've got to teach teachers about modifying, making accommodations, you know, different learning styles, how to layer curriculum differently, et cetera. So I think, you know, the reports are, it mirrors what we found, and I think it's a good document, and we have still a lot of work to do.
Thank you, Mr. Vaul. Thank you, thank you for the report. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the superintendent discussing, oh, excuse me, my mistake, the Director of Technologies report, and I'd recognize Angelo Rota. Angelo Rota, I'm sorry.
Good evening.
Good evening.
That was an interesting set of remarks from Mr. Brennan, especially with respect to technology.
No criticism of you, Mr. Rota.
No. You know, as a tech person and an educator, that's always a huge question. And I'll speak about that somewhat at length as I proceed, but when people think about technology, they just say, oh, there's a lot of technology in the school community because they all have laptops in front of them. There's a lot of technology there. And technology just isn't the hardware. The technology is how you use the hardware and how the instruction is enhanced because of the hardware. And so that's a challenge to me is the technology person for the district, the chief tech person for the district, because how do I work with teachers to continue to improve the great job they're already doing with AP and that group of students? And how do I also make technology available to those students who are struggling in order to raise their performance as well? So it's working with technology, and a great part of working with technology is professional development and how we help teachers to teach in more creative ways using the technology we have. What I'm seeing, being new in the district as well, is a great readiness on the part of staff for technology. They're very excited about technology. They know technology exists. It's how to get the technology to them and what we have now that they can use in their If I go back five years and I think of when I wanted to bring technology to teachers, people weren't familiar with things as they are now. Facebook, Twitter, YouTube, all of these resources now which are so common in the outside world, outside of education, people already know about. The challenge now is how do we give it meaning and enhance instruction by using these tools? It isn't just those facets of the technology, it's being able to use them. We have a number of new staff, and I'm excited about the new staff that we have in the district. We have now a data coordinator, Cynthia Kelly, who's been at the JFK Middle School for a number of years, has moved to take the position of data coordinator. She'll be working with our SIMS data, EPIMS, STS, getting MCAS data out, working with principals and staff to increase our use of data across the district. So I'm very excited to have her on the tech team. We hired a new elementary technology integration specialist, Andrea Marks. Andrea Marks is a graduate of Columbia. She worked at the Poly Prep Country Day School and the Ethical Culture Fieldston School in New York City. She's great with technology. Her philosophy aligns with my philosophy, which is technology is a tool, it's to be used to enhance instruction, and she'll be working closely with all the elementary school staff to achieve that goal. We have recently hired a half-time high school technology integration specialist, Gabriel Richard Harrington. She's been working as a consultant. She also works with school districts. She's part of MasQ, very knowledgeable in the area of technology integration, and I'm looking forward to doing a lot of new things with her at the high school level.
I could interrupt a moment, but I just want to clarify that these are three new people, not three new positions, replacing people that were in current positions. Thank you.
Our current conditions, our network is fair. That's how I would classify it, and as you heard from Mr. Brennan's remarks of NEASC, they say, yes, you have this equipment, but it is outdated, does need to be revamped. We are working, using the budget that we currently have, to target a number of areas. We have a number of old desktop computers. We're purchasing 30 new desktop computers, which will replace the eldest ones that we have in service. A number of them are at JFK, they will be replaced in the next month or so. We've also instituted a help desk. There hasn't been a help desk up to this point. We formally instituted a help desk where we have staff in each building reporting needs to a central, a person in the main office of that building, and then they forward that to the help desk. We create help desk tickets so that we can see where the areas of help are most common. We can answer them within 48 to 72 hours maximum. We can prioritize, we can see, we can group by building, so we can send one person to one building and they can accomplish all those tasks at once. So it's much more organized, and it also helps us for professional development because if we see there are simple issues that actually we can train folks to be able to solve on their own, then that'll save us for more important things. So the help desk has been a great thing, and it's really working out very well. The use of technology by the staff is phenomenal. Mr. Brennan mentioned Sue Biggs as one. She's phenomenal with the technology that she uses. A number of our teachers bring their own devices. That is a concern to me as a network person as well, because I worry about viruses, not only to protect us, but also to protect them. And even though a lot of folks use Macintosh, Macintosh is not exempt from viruses, they are being attacked now and then, so we have to be careful. So we do encourage people, if they wish to bring their own device, we will make every effort to make it compatible with our system. If it is not compatible with our system, we'll do whatever we can to make their use comfortable, but we do require antivirus on their machines, both for our protection and theirs. We're going to be expanding. We're looking at Google Apps for Education. I hope to have that in place at least by between Thanksgiving and Christmas with Google Docs and calendars. Currently, we're using paper calendars in the district. I think that's way beyond its time. If you want to sign up for a computer lab at the high school, you go to the office and one of the office ladies will take your name down. We've got to get away from that. So Google Docs will give us that, Calendar will give us that. Then we will begin to move our mail over from RoomWise into Gmail. And so we'll have that. And then monthly, we will open up every month...
Feel free to cheer at any time.
We will open up every month thereafter a new feature of the Google Apps family of Google applications. So give people time to absorb, little by little, the overall offerings of Google, and I have to say they're fantastic. They call me all the time. If I have a question, they call me right back. So it's great to deal with them. And they've covered so much so well. They're doing a good job. We have Moodle in the district. Moodle is housed on our own servers inside. I'm moving to get away from that. Mr. Shelfo has given me some information in the past on a product called Schoology. He's using it in his school, and we've started using it at JFK and at the high school, and we hope to move from Moodle to Schoology. It's web-based, it's outside of our district. We'd rather have things that are more cloud-based and secure and more modern in their interface rather than Moodle. And also, we can transfer Moodle into Schoology so teachers won't lose all the work that they've spent years preparing. So we're looking to do that. And we continue to look for more cloud-based solutions. I would be much happier if we had more things in the cloud than inside. That will require a bigger pipe, if you will, meaning we need a faster internet connection. We have expanded to 100-meg pipe from Comcast. It's a business-class service, and it's already been phased in at the high school, and the speeds are a lot better. We'll be expanding that out to JFK and the rest of the district. We're also working on a new firewall, which will allow teachers to go to sites that are blocked. They'll have to put their name, their password, and a reason why they're going there. So that later, if they say, well, I read because it has to do with history, and we find out, it's not really history. You know, we have a record, but at the time, when they need it in class, they'll be able to get there, rather than have to send down to the help desk, oh, I need this unblocked. Well, it was a teachable moment. I had to wait three days for it to open up. Forget it now, I can't use it. I lost that timing. So we have to do a little bit of change in our business practice, too. We have to make things more accessible to the users. We have some issues that we have to look at. Coming attractions, again, we're looking at replacing hardware, a new firewall system, increased bandwidth. Our website, the Northampton Public Schools website, has been, let's say, neglected for a while. There are a number of names on the website that are no longer with us. And so I've asked Trish Duffy, who's a former integration specialist for the district, she was at Northampton High School as well, and she's retired. And I've asked her because she has a great interest in still helping out the Northampton Public Schools to work with us. And she's already moved in the high school website, which was separate last year, has brought it in to the domain of the Northampton Public Schools. She's also working with Jim Miller, the athletic director, to create his own page for all the athletic events. She's working with Guidance, and Guidance will maintain their own page with all the links and resources students need for college. And she's going to be working with the elementary schools to bring all those schools up to date and get all the staff names and information correct. And the challenge, the challenge is moving forward with what we have now. I know there is a number out there of 300,000, and I can't plan on that. It's wonderful if it does happen, but I have to make plans for what if it doesn't happen or only a part of it happens. And so we continue to face that challenge of moving forward and adding as much as we can without that planned inclusion. Any questions?
Hey, Ms...
Yeah, I just want to know if you need permission to take a breath, because I don't think you've stopped yet.
Oh, that, once I get rolling, it's all right.
How long have you been with us?
Eight weeks. Longer than I already...
Just, it's astounding to me how much you've learned about what technology is and isn't in this district and how on top of it you seem to be already. And just, and I will be the first one, I've told you, to applaud me when I'm not on the list.
Ms. Mc...
Well, I'd like to second what Stephanie said. It's just really refreshing to have someone as our technology director who is both an educator and a technology person, as you said that you were, and who understands technology integration in the classroom. It's just the most refreshing concept that's come around with technology since I've been on the school committee, I think. So I'm excited and thrilled about that. And I would just tell the members of the school committee who are not on the rules and policy committee that we have been considering what our technology policy looks like, and it's very complex, but I'm excited that we're going to figure that out in a way that makes sense, too, provides the safeguards that we need in the district. But he's been a huge help on that. And finally, I would like to ask you, what the prospects are, once you get all of these other things nailed down, what the prospects are for students to be able to create their own videos and have a YouTube of sorts where they can share videos made in robotics or science class or English or social studies, whatever it is? I think that our students are already way ahead of a lot of us in tech skills, and I think that would be an interesting and challenging way for them to deal with things. And it's something that we haven't been able to provide them completely so far.
And there's just, there are so many new products that are out now. You don't need the fancy video cam or flip cams. There are cell phones that'll do videos. It's a matter of just getting the software that you can take these videos, join them together, whether it's Windows Movie Maker, whether it's iMovie, whether, whatever you're using to create those little snippets, put those little snippets together to create the movie, and then just upload.
I just have been to several conferences where I've seen a lot of software that was designed specifically for schools that provides the security that you need so that the videos are not going necessarily out into the world. They are used within the school setting, and it's carefully controlled, but yet students have the opportunity to share with their fellow classmates what they've created, so in a controlled way, yeah. Yeah, I'd just like to see us be able to offer that to our students as well.
And to kind of relate to that with Google Apps, once we get into Google Apps and we bring students in, we can create a student group. So students can email within Northampton K-12.us. They won't be able to email out to Hotmail or have anyone from Hotmail, MSN, wherever, in, but yet teachers will be able to communicate with students. Teachers will be able to email in and out because naturally they need to contact parents and so on, but the student group inside, and that'll be a great help because a number of our students use Prezi, which is an online presentation system. And more and more, as you use these programs that are web-based, you need to have an email to register. And a number of our students don't have an email and they can't register. So if they're in a computer class, whether it's at JFK or at the high school and they want to have an account, they're prevented from participating. And so this way, it'll be a bona fide email. It'll be one of our emails and they'll be able to make use of these other resources. So I think that'll open the door to more things that they can experience.
I just wanted to say that I may be showing my geek flag by talking about this, but this stuff gets me really excited. Firewalls and replacements and things like that. I've really enjoyed talking with Angelo about how these things can work in the school environment and he's got a tough job ahead of him. But I'm really just thrilled with the work he's done so far. I just want to commend you on that. It's great.
I actually had a question. And it concerns the domain name for email and the migration to Google Apps. When we did it on the city side, we had a number of sort of some disparate, some of our departments had their own email addresses. And so we moved to Google Apps, allowed us to actually unify all of those under just NorthamptonMA.gov. And I'm curious, is the NPS.K-12.us, is that something that you'd be stuck with if you moved to the Google Apps, to a cloud-based email server? Or how, what would be the options there?
The NPS site, which is still around, was actually hosted by MechNet. It was the Merrimack Education Consortium, I believe. And we don't do business with them anymore.
Okay.
And so that, even though that name is still around, it's not part of us. We're strictly Northampton K-12.us.
Okay.
So that'll be our, because that's what our Groupwise email is and we're just going to keep that because that's what people are familiar with. And also, our website is just www.K-12.us. So it'll all be uniform in there.
Other questions?
So you mentioned about, once we're in using Gmail as a staff, a staff can then email parents and stuff. I know in the past, there's been concern about email trails in here and discouraged from using email for communication as much as possible. Are we moving away from that so that we can open lines of communication better or are we?
Well, not necessarily because, you know, all of our email communications are public documents unless, of course, their personal records or confidential student records. So we still have to be careful and cautious about how we do.
Same procedure, just-
Right. More efficient and effective.
We will still have the server that dumps every night and the retention-
The backup.
For so long and all of those things.
Right. And we're trying to expand and upgrade it.
We have an email archival system and we'll continue to use that with Google. We've already researched that and it's easy just to connect to it. So we'll still have it because by law, we do.
There was no problem canceling the contract with who I was archiving things.
We were archiving it ourselves.
Oh, I thought we had a, somebody that was doing it for like nine years or something. They had to keep all of our emails.
Mr. Moore?
Yeah, I was wondering if in this eight weeks you have, I had an impression, I think we assume that everybody, all the students have access sort of at home to some other thing, but I think that's probably mostly true. But do we have any idea about students who don't, and I'm sure there are? And do we have any sort of thoughts about how we can address that?
I've asked a number of teachers about that and also about cell phones. About five to six percent of students don't have computers at home and five to six percent don't have phones. A lot of students have phones but not smartphones. There's a difference. And so things that we would want to do in class, where we could do things in class with smartphones, a lot of kids are left out because they don't have a cellphone. So we're trying to figure out, how can we expand our use of phones? Either it's a student response system because now your phone can be a student response system, you can put a multiple choice question. And if you don't have a smartphone, you can still text. And so you can still get away from it that way. Other districts that I know about, what they've done is they've lent out laptops or netbooks overnight to students who don't have a computer at home. What they've done is they've had a wireless connection with a Verizon card. A student takes it home. Brockton leaps to mind because I know Brockton did it. And I met one of the tech people from Brockton one day and I asked him, "Is there a problem with that?" And they said, "It's amazing. We never have problems. The parents are so grateful to have that machine at home that it always comes back. There's never a problem. There's never a loss. There's never damage." There is a certain amount of funding that's required to have that on hand to lend it out. That's a possibility.
Ms. DeVall?
I just saw on TV, I believe it was this morning, that they just stated the direction of computers could become obsolete because I believe probably the iPad and tablets and stuff like that. But I just mentioned that, just today that they said that.
PC is dead.
Absolute. So it's going to be really hard, I think, to catch up with ourselves and then catch up with each other. You have done a good job. Thank you.
Any other comments? Did you have any closing remarks? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks.
Now we'll move on to the MCAS data and Superintendent Salzer.
I'm going to give you an overview of some of the MCAS results and I included a twenty-five page report in your packet with some data. I'm not going to look through that page by page. However, I do understand if after my overview today, if you'd like more specific data, I will have Joanna McKenna do a PowerPoint for you and give you more data to the questions that you may have after tonight's presentation. But looking at the big picture, we're, the focus for the Department of Education this year is to move kids out of the morning. So they're wanting kids out of morning into need. And they want to focus on moving kids from proficient to advanced. And so that is the focus of our strategic efforts this year. And many people are going to ask, we always focus on the kids at the bottom and the kids at the top, why don't we focus on the kids in the middle? And the word I got from our DSAC representative is we don't have the luxury of focusing on the middle right now. We have to focus on the kids in morning and we have to focus on getting more kids into advanced.
I can't hear you really well. Who said that?
Donna Harland is our DSAC representative from the Department of Education. And so that is the task that our district is assigned with for this year. We need to increase the challenge of our curriculum and also lend more support to our students with special needs so that they can be successful in the MCAS at all grades. As you know, we are, our status is that we're Level Three. And what Level Three means is that if one of our schools, which as you know is Bridge Street School, falls in the bottom twenty percent of performance in the state, then that school's labeled Level Three. And any district that has a Level Three school is labeled Level Three overall. And so it is incumbent upon me and us as a district to make sure that I focus the efforts and the money on Bridge Street to bring them up out of Level Three, which lifts the district up. When we, you know, connected with this status and with this task from the state is some money. And we were given twenty-five thousand, six hundred ninety-two dollars this year to help support our work in these areas. And that is up four thousand dollars from last year, what they gave to us. I have a lot of ideas for that money, more ideas than this money, but money is going to be targeted at Bridge Street and focused on literacy development, on math support and additional math programs, maybe before school or after school, and also on professional development for the teachers so that they can better work with the students in an inclusion setting, which I think is a strategy we need to increase at Bridge Street. In addition, you know, with the MCAS results, we are measured on our adequate yearly progress. So we're measured against ourselves to some extent, too, at this point. And we have to make certain increases in order to continue to, you know, move up in our status as well. This year, the MCAS is going to be specifically based on the Massachusetts Curriculum Frameworks. And that's something we've been working on in our schools, connecting our curriculum to the frameworks. And it's our job to teach every child in our schools the curriculum within these frameworks. And then we'll be able to make our adequate yearly progress. MCAS is a good tool. MCAS is important, but I think I don't need to remind you that we all know that the whole child is what's important to us in Northampton Public Schools and it's what's important to our teachers in every classroom. And I want to acknowledge and make sure that we are aware of our award-winning programs in art and music and physical education and our Strong World Language programs, that we don't want to get carried away and focus too hard on just the MCAS results. We want to look at our school district as a whole. And as you heard tonight, the quality and successful programs in our advanced placement at the high school as a result of the K-12 learning that our kids do. It's important for me to point out that the high school, which was Level One High School, had fallen to Level Two this year. Kind of a surprise, following the report that you heard tonight. Again, we missed our targets on the test scores, our students who were English language learners and students in special needs in those two subgroups, we missed our targets. And the total that we missed in those two areas was four students. So if four of those students would have scored higher, the high school would have remained Level One. So that's how specific this grading is.
Four out of five, excuse me, four out of five men students.
In those subgroups, of those two subgroups. I don't know the total. I don't have that right in front of me. So at Bridge Street, what I want to do is, as I said, use the money to focus on students with special needs. And what I'm recommending is that we want to not only increase the academic support by getting kids into the regular education classroom more often. We need more inclusion. That's how we're going to raise the level of expectation and curricular challenge for these kids, but also get them used to the curriculum that's expected of all of our students. And the only way they're going to do that is by being in class with them. But of course, there's coaching and teaching that has to go on for the teachers and special education teachers in order to co-teach. Not only do we want to increase their academic skills, but we also need to focus on their test-taking skills. As I looked at the results with Donna Harland just on Tuesday, we found that there are many students who left multiple choice answers blank. And we all know that multiple choice, you don't want to leave the answer blank. Take a chance, take an educated guess. And so with test-taking skills, we can help kids eliminate on the four choices, what are the two best, and from there try to select an answer. And taking a chance on an answer is much better than leaving an answer blank. Overall, when you look at our scores compared to ourselves over the last couple of years, our performance was stable this year compared to last year. In some areas, we increased; in some areas, we declined, in English Language Arts and in math at the elementary level. And we're going to put targeted support in place for these students and for these teachers. This year and the spring will be MCAS as usual. However, next year, we're going to move to the PARC testing. That is the Partnership of Assessment for Readiness for College and Career. When we move to PARC, obviously, we have a new set of data, new test scores. It'd be more difficult to measure our performance compared to previous years, but they're still going to do it. They're going to have a formula for MCAS and PARC, and it will take four years to phase out MCAS because we only use the previous four years of data. For us in Northampton, this year is a good year because our data from four years ago that's falling off was our lowest performing data. So our average is going to be, we'll see an improvement in our average just because of that. With the new PARC assessment, we're going to need increased technology. We're going to need improved infrastructure and computers and computer labs because that is an online test. And so our district has to begin to get prepared for that test, and that's why we are working with the capital planning, which you'll hear more about in a little bit. And Angelo is working to prepare our system so that our kids will be able to take this test in two years. That test is reportedly going to be more comprehensive, more in-depth knowledge for students to demonstrate, and also will include more writing, persuasive writing and structured writing skills. So our teachers, who have been working with the writer's workshop model for the past few years, are on track to prepare our kids for success in those exams. Our progress was good on our growth model overall. There are a couple of highlights. The Hispanic students at JFK had exceptional performance. They met and exceeded their target, and that was a huge leap forward for that subgroup over previous years. Other subgroups are not very far off their goal, but as I said, we have to focus on getting these students and these subgroups from warning into needs improvement and move forward. The good news is that we have our school data teams in place that are focusing on identifying the skills need to learn to move these kids forward. And I wanted to mention that another highlight is that Ryan Road not only met but exceeded the target for students with special needs. And one of the reasons I feel and Marty Riddle feels for this success is the high percentage of students who are included in regular education classrooms. That's the standard way of doing business at Ryan Road. And so we want to increase that practice across the district. The good news, again, from the Department of Education, that our school improvement plans and our district improvement plan are focused exactly on addressing all of the challenges and that our objectives are in place to ensure individual achievement. So we were complimented on our work and I mentioned that that was a collaborative effort from the school committee and the administrative leadership team. We built that together last January. We revised it and edited it and put it in place. And they wanted to acknowledge that and the good work that we did on that. And so, it's the end of my notes. However, in your packet, I'm only going to pull out three sheets that I want to highlight for you tonight. As I said, then I'll pause for questions and we can bring back more specific data for a presentation next month if you'd like. If you wanted to look at page five, you would see Jackson Street School. And what this report does is it follows a cohort of kids. So it's not just comparing grade five for the last three years, it's comparing the same group of kids, grade three, grade four, grade five. And it factors out the kids who came new to the school or left the school. So this is the cohort of kids that took this test, the forty-five students, as you see there at the bottom, and their performance in math over those three years. And you can see the dramatic increase in students who scored advanced and proficient. And unfortunately, the warning stayed still, so that's something that we have to focus on in getting those kids from warning into needs improvement. The next one I wanted to highlight was on page nine, and that was JFK's math. Same subgroup of kids, the same hundred and forty kids from two thousand and eight to two thousand and twelve. And you can see the dramatic increase, again, in advanced and proficient in those students in two thousand and twelve in grade eight and just the minimal number of students who are in warning and needs improvement. And finally, on page ten, you'll see NHS and their group of kids from two thousand and six to two thousand and twelve. And if you can look at what happened to those students, the advanced and proficient is just absolutely amazing, the progress of those students over those six years. I will stop there and hear your questions, thoughts, or comments.
Ms. DeVall?
I just have a question. You said that we're, um, Bridge Street's the three and-
The Level Three, right.
Right, and high school's Level Two. Is it correct to assume that the rest are all Level Ones?
Yes.
So Ryan Road got out of its standing?
Yes. Yes. They had great success this year, this past year.
And also, the other thing is that Northampton High School, that page, the last page, not only did the advanced go up from twelve percent in two thousand and six to fifty-nine percent now, but the warning and the failing went from thirteen all the way down to four. That's really notable.
Any other questions about the MCAS data? Okay. I'm hearing none, then we'll move into the review of the superintendent's capital planning proposal.
I wasn't prepared for that. I thought we'd be on that for another ten minutes. Okay. We'll move on. That's great. All right. So capital planning, Mr. McLaughlin and Mr. Wazowski, and they met last night, they're going to meet every Wednesday. They're going to meet every Wednesday for the next four Wednesdays on capital planning overall. And so I would like to ask Mr. McLaughlin to summarize where we are with that.
Okay. I'm going to steal a little bit of narrative that had previously said by Chris Brennan and Angelo in regards to analogy. And I will use some of their emphasis when I get to the chart that you folks have. But I've been working with Central Services, Mike Demon and Jason Doyle, in the submission of these capital projects and this capital project list. There's about 36 projects on the list that have been identified that were presented last week to the Budget and Property Committee. And we went over each of the items that were on that list. The decision by the committee was to move all the projects forward as identified in a priority summary list, which you have. And the main emphasis that we talked about in the need of meeting school improvement program, the district improvement plan, meeting our NEASC and our PARK testing happens to be technology. And if you look at the chart that you do have, those are the two items that are at the very top of the chart. The Capital Technology Improvement Plan, Angelo referred to $300,000. What you don't have here is all the detail that makes up the $300,000. But it's been reviewed and gone over as to how do we start where we are now, move forward to meet the technology needs that Angelo outlined, either through smartphones, either through laptops, notepads, wireless, a stronger backbone in the system, improvements throughout all the buildings. And when all of it was put together, it came up to $300,000 to move our district forward from where we are right now. And the second part of the technology is a new student information system. Right now, we are on a Starbase system, which is the student information system. The company that supports that has been bought out. The system will be phased out as of June 30th. It will no longer be supported after that date. Angelo and I have been talking. There's going to be a review committee to review the Starbase system as it exists now, look at what we want for the future, what the needs are of the district. There's going to be a committee that's going to be put together to assess that. We do need a student information system, which is the backbone of our reporting to the Department of Education. By, there's hundreds of categories by age, by grade, by testing scores, and everything you can think of that gets put into this system. And this is used every day. But we do need to get a new system. So there's going to be an evaluation going forward. Right now, with the Starbase system in our budget, we have $22,000 budgeted for the current system, which is only a maintenance, ongoing, upkeep, licensing type of fee with the Starbase system. The $25,000 that you see here is in addition to what's currently in our local budget. So what we're really looking at is about a $45,000 expenditure moving forward for a new student database system to be used in the district. So the $25,000 is the incremental charge to get into a new system, transfer over, swap over data, get training, get support for that, besides any other licensing and any other maintenance that's needed. So the two top items, again, the capital planning and the student information. The remaining items that are on the list are more of building structural, building improvements. Some of them are safety, some are for security, some are because they are going to become building issue, code issues. I'm sure all of you have read through them. They've been prioritized by Central Services by the urgency in which they believe they should be addressed. So they labeled items by the project as whether it's high, medium, or low. And then they looked at what they thought would be the appropriate year to have certain items put into the capital plan. So it was looked at from a couple different perspectives. So what you have is the chart laid out from 2013 to 2018. One of the criteria that I wanted to have into this capital plan was not just the immediate issues that we think of, that we know of, but I asked to look at all issues, even though they might not be important today and need to be immediately addressed, but to be addressed in its entirety. So we know that these projects are out there. We have looked at them. So you, as a committee, know that we have items that are there, but will be of concern later on, two, three, four, five years down the road. So we wanted to put as much onto the list as possible so you could see what's there so you can be aware of what they're looking at and how they view it in a priority list. So these 36 items that you have in front of you total $2,846,000 of improvements in the totality of all the items together. And we had our first capital planning meeting yesterday. Ed Zehauski and myself are two members that are on the committee. I believe by ordinance, there's a certain number of positions that are on this committee. And I'm looking at you, Mr. Mayor, to say...
Yes.
Confirm that?
That is correct. And they include a school committee representative and the business manager from the school.
Okay. Thank you.
As well as a city councillor, as well as, I appoint, three residents of the city as well, just generally. And the finance director and auditor also serve as staff to the committee.
So last night, we had the first meeting. There were a couple of presentations that were made to the committee at that meeting. But it was very carefully placed with the finance director where Susan Wright had given an overview of the capital process, what we are looking at, what we want to try to achieve as a capital committee, what we are charged with when we are looking at capital projects, also understanding the city debt status of where we are, knowing what current projects we have that are being funded, the amounts of money through principal and interest. So there was some fairly extensive background information that was shared at the beginning of our capital process to put us all in the right framework as we look forward to all of the projects. So we, as a school district, are coming up next week for our presentation to the overall committee in expressing our needs and capital desires as we see fit and move forward. So what you have here, the three-member Budget and Property Committee, as members of the school committee, have looked at this, and they have agreed that this is what we are going to put forward to the citywide capital committee. So you have a copy of it. And if I can answer any questions of items that are on there, I will give it a go.
Ms. Minn?
Earlier, Ms. DeValle mentioned something about trying to be more green in our district. And I know we've had some requests expressed in the past to do something about the Styrofoam trays used for lunches at Ryan Road School. And the answer was, we can't get rid of them until we redo the kitchen and the cafeteria at Ryan Road School. And yet I noticed that it's way down the list, like six years from now, with a low priority listing. And I'm wondering if that's just based on age of equipment and that it's been listed there, or if there was consideration given to actually revamping the way we do business? And would that elevate its status any?
I'd start with Angelo. Let's clarify. I don't believe we use Styrofoam trays anymore. Last year, we bought...
Dishwasher.
Last year, that changed last year.
Okay. Excellent.
Styrofoam trays...
I'm way behind. I'm sorry.
Have, yes. Styrofoam trays last year had been removed from the service line, and we have compostable type, the paper trays.
I don't know how I missed that, but I'm really excited about it because that's been one of my concerns since I got on the school committee 20 years ago. So I'm glad to know that there is progress over time. But, so then, for that reason, this was considered less of a priority need.
Not for that reason. No.
No. Just because, okay. Well, I mean, if we aren't using Styrofoam and filling up the landfill with it, then it does, in my mind, become less of a priority. So I'm just curious how it wound up with the priority that it had, so.
Priority it had, when I went back to look at it and reviewed it with capital, or, excuse me, with Central Services, it was one of those projects that they didn't, they, because they're looking at the facility structure from a structural point of view and a need of replacement or repair, became a low priority from their facility. The replacement of a chimney, replacement of boilers, you know, those type of things became a higher priority than upgrading that kitchen facility.
Okay.
If the committee wishes to change that priority to a higher priority, I'm, I'll do whatever you would like. But it was only put at that priority because of other items that had a higher need.
Had higher need. Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Born?
Just had a question. I mean, are we reasonably confident that the technology improvement plan would be, will go through, or we have no idea, I mean, at this point?
We don't know. As it was explained last night, there is a few different pools of money. There is $250,000 of available, and I'll use the word that Susan used last night, free cash. That's available. There is some other monies, $650,000 in the stabilization fund that is not earmarked. And there is the potential for some added changes into the debt schedule. That could result in some savings, but also some of the interest that was factored into that debt schedule might be a little bit high. So we might earn a little bit more interest in the interest-principle process.
So I guess my question is, is there an opportunity in that presentation to kind of show where our technology is today, where we'd like it to be, what that gap is, and what it would mean for students?
That was something Brian and I talked about earlier this morning in discussion with Angelo.
Next Wednesday, I believe, we're scheduled to be able to make our pitch for our money. And Angelo and Mark would be the ones to do that. I'm trying to see if we can get that rescheduled, if we can swap places with someone.
76 Radio Shack computer that you're bringing for the...
Well, I would like to be there, and I can't be there next Wednesday, but I can be there the following Wednesday, so we're going to try to swap places so that I can be there to advocate for it as well. But at least Mark and Angelo will be there if I can switch.
But right now, that's the best information that Susan can give us overall. And I know Angelo will go into detail as to what makes up the $300,000. So I don't know until we get farther through the process.
Ms. Pitt?
Can you just give us a quick picture of kind of the process for how all the various departments are presenting their priorities? So last night, you had a meeting for the first time, was, you said there were some presentations. Was that from various departments?
Forbes Library presented as well as...
I didn't hear you, Ed.
Forbes Library did a presentation.
Yeah. And the Building Inspector. Those were the two.
And so every, every meeting, like a different, some different departments will present, like so Fire and...
Correct.
DPW and Police.
Police, Fire, DPW, they're scheduled, not next week, but scheduled the week after as the schedule's built right now.
And so the process that the Capital Improvement Committee hears all of the presentations, and then they make decisions about that and meet at one?
They're going to listen to all the, all the presentations of need. We all have documentation. What we had to do, if I back up a couple of weeks, when I sat with Angelo and I sat with Central Services, we came up with a list. We had to come up with single documentations of the life expectancy of any of the capital projects, if our cost estimates were based on engineers, architect designs, vendor quotes, three-bid, formal bid process. There was a fairly detailed analysis that was devised to determine where we are and how we arrived at our numbers and our projects that we had to submit. So I had to submit 36 different projects to the finance director to put together with all the other departments in the city to come up with the entire two-inch book that we're working with for all the submitted capital projects that everybody's looking to have. So that has all the detail and the documentation to that. So as we go through the next four or five weeks, each department will be presenting to the committee. And we will, at the end, sit there and go through a discussion process and evaluate on a particular scoring mechanism to determine what are the recommendations that come out of this committee.
And it will essentially be a large, sort of a larger version of what Mr. McLaughlin has presented. It'll be a seven-year plan with projects prioritized for each year. And those will be recommendations made to me. And then I'm obligated to then take those recommendations and come up with a final plan that I present to the city council for approval and funding.
And just one further thing. In Budget and Property, the $300,000 for technology improvement was actually broken down into several categories. Will the Capital Improvement Committee understand that it's not $300,000 or nothing for technology?
Correct. That, oh, yeah. That was part of a discussion I had with Angelo in regards to, we have to understand that there's still only so much money that becomes available in free cash. And how that gets divided up will come out of this particular group. But if there are portions of the $300,000, and we can do $150,000 and get ourselves in a, in a situation where we're staged for future success, yes, let's move forward with the $150,000. And that was part of the discussion I had with the superintendent this morning of how the best way to present that to the committee to make it understandable that it's just not a chunk of money that we all are not.
That's a question, if I can. Mr. Tsukowski, in your role on the committee, do you just have a decision-making role, or are you also in the position where you can advocate for the schools that cross purposes for what you're doing?
Well, I certainly would. When, when we go to prioritize at the end in a few weeks, we'll use a really basic scale of one, two, and three. And we'll go through each department and label it as a one, two, or a three. So I guess, trying to remain neutral, I would listen to all their requests and know that, you know, being, being a resident of Northampton, all those things would be important to the overall goodness of Northampton in so many ways. But I certainly would be looking towards the, the school department's needs as well, making sure that, you know, my voting and rating would reflect what I know most closely and dearly to me being on the school committee. Does that make sense?
It does. I just didn't want to leave you out when I said Angelo and Mark. And I will want to do this presentation to advocate for the schools. I didn't want to leave you out of that.
Sure.
But I didn't quite know your role, and that makes sense to me.
I have a question. What are the, what are the canopies?
The canopies are, a canopy that goes over the, the main entrances and the doors to the building. There had been a, a review of water coming in through some of the main doors and how it gets brought into the building. And there was some prior discussion prior to me about having canopies put over those doors to eliminate that type of, you know, influx of water and rain, snow, and everything else coming in the buildings.
And also, oh, I'm sorry. Yeah?
I was just going to, it's already quarter of 10. I think we should talk, if we're going to talk about the start time, I think we're still, we're all reasonably awake. So if we can kind of wrap up this part of the evening.
Okay.
I'll keep my remark brief if I might, because I did want to bring it up. I'll keep my remark brief if I might, because I did want to bring it up in regards to the funding. Susan Wright is doing some work along with the, forgive me for not knowing the woman's name, but she is the, the...
Auditor.
The auditor, thank you.
Yes.
In going through a lot of the capital improvement allocations in the past and finding money that hasn't been expended yet and looking at that, so, for example, every year, or at least every year, monies have been given to different groups to fund projects. Some of those projects are still being funded and haven't been completed. Others have been completed and they came in under bid, and so there's little pockets of money still available that have been allocated, for example, to the school department. And we're going to be asking each department that comes to speak to whether or not that, that project is completed and if that money that was given to be used for that project can now be, I think it's called reprogrammed, into one of the current projects that we're looking at. So there may be opportunities to look at some of these school projects that their money is still available, to move that into reprogrammed money into some of our new projects. So even though we might not get an allocation from the city as much as we want, we may still get some money coming in through an old project that we can reprogram that money to, if that makes sense. And I was unaware of that, something that hasn't been done as far as I can remember being on the, the capital improvements committee, but it does look like a, a way that we might be able to bring in a few more dollars.
That had been done just most recently with some of the money that was in the pool filter account that was transferred over so we could complete the repair of the track. So we had already done one reprogramming of some of those monies that were determined that it wasn't needed to replace certain parts of the pool filtering system, and it did get moved. So that helped finish off and get the track resurfaced.
It requires a vote at the city council so that it's not, we just can't reprogram it, we have to go back to...
I remember that coming up recently on those holes over at the DPW.
Exactly. We reprogrammed some money for, for a project that had been phased out and moved it to the, to do the repairs in the barn. But it, there's other, there's lots of other implications, because in some cases, we bonded the money, and so there are rules around that, and very, so we have to be very clear about the intent and how it was used, and so, so that's, that's part of, also, part of the calculation. But clearly, a school project moving to another school project, there shouldn't be big issues around that, so.
I'd like to finish my question. Is that okay?
Certainly.
Thank you. The other question I had was, Jackson Street, they have nothing down here through 218. Are they fine?
I asked the same thing of central services. They did not have any urgent issues to put on the capital list. They do have some issues that fall below the $10,000 threshold, that some of that they can repair, improve upon with the normal maintenance budget.
Okay, so are there any other questions regarding the capital planning proposal? Okay. So this was, you were not asking for a vote on this, you just wanted to review it.
No, it's information.
Okay, excellent. So the next item before us is returning to an item that we continued from the last meeting, which concerns school start time. As you may recall, we considered the three proposals that were brought to us by the superintendent last time. There was some discussion, and then there was a request that, an idea that Mr. Meyer came up with, be looked at in the intervening time between last meeting and this meeting, and ask the superintendent to come back to discuss the possibilities of that. So I guess the first step may be to just hear from you about that.
Right, thank you. So we'll pick up from there. The document they have in your packet is, the first three proposals are the same as what you saw last month. However, in the discussion, you'll see proposal four, Donnie Meyer asked me to consider another series of times that we thought of right during the meeting, and taking it back to the team, the times that he had wouldn't have worked. However, we just made some few minor adjustments and came up with something that would work along the same lines, and you can see that there in proposal four. But my comment to you as a school committee is that these other, the first three proposals were given to the public in August, and they had a month to look at it before the September meeting, and so now, at this point, the public has seen these for three, for two months, so they've been able to really weigh in on it. With this proposal, if you want to seriously consider it, I would ask for the same consideration that we take it back to the public. I take it to the high school, and high school teachers let them weigh in on it, and then we bring it back. So if you do want to consider this, I would just ask for some time to vet it properly so we're not short cutting the process. At that meeting, Howard Moore also asked me to reconsider the two-tier system, asking me why it wouldn't work. I, I don't think we're ever going to really see this the same way, and Howard and I spent a bit of time together talking through this between the last meeting and now. From my team's perspective, there just aren't enough seats for all the riders in the two tiers, and I know from Howard Moore's perspective, there are enough seats to do two tiers. We just, we can't seem to get to a meeting, meeting point on that. And then if we did consider that, the hub system at the elementary schools is something that would really have to be vetted with the public so they understand the, the full meaning of that, and I would, my fear, my caution is that the principals and the teachers and the parents would really not be in favor of that if we vetted it out, but I'm willing to if that's the recommendation of the committee.
So would you want to possibly just walk through proposal four again, just so the public who's...
People at home, I'm sorry.
Who don't have this in front of them could just hear that.
Right, so if there were proposal four, then JFK would start at 7:55, which it does now, and we would end it at 2:25. I can't figure out why JFK was at six hours and 35 minutes when six and a half hours is more the standard. So we would just adjust that, which would help us with the pickup times, so that the buses have time to not make those rushed trips at the end of the day. It would make JFK six and a half hours, cutting it by five minutes. NHS would move from 8:30 to 3 o'clock, and the elementary schools would move from 8:50, where they are starting now, to 9 o'clock and go from 9 to 3:30. That is including, remember, the extra 20 minutes that I'm asking for to be considered at the elementary schools, which, of course, would have to be negotiated through our collective bargaining process.
I have a question. If it were to change on option four, what time does that leave the bus coming? Is that leaving the bus coming for kids to have enough time to do after-school studies and, and hang there, because at that point, and then go home at four? I mean, are they the third bus to be picked up, or are you still...
You mean elementary schools?
No, I mean the high school.
High school. No, with just a half an hour between high school and elementary school, there's still going to have to be just that five-minute period for kids to get from class to the bus.
Well, is there any way to move it to a later bus time for the high school students, considering the number of riders that ride it, and also the opportunities, the older kids, so they'd have more opportunities to hang and study, get homework done, whatever?
Well, I certainly would like to have a later bus at the high school. I'd also like to have it at the middle school, so the kids could participate more in after-school activities. Remember that you've asked me to do this with no, no additional cost, and so to, it would take some more studying, let me just say that, in order to make that happen, yeah.
Well, it would be instead of, I mean, the bus would come, would come later instead of earlier. So the reason I'm thinking that is because the elementary school time now going to 3:30, if the Hamp High bus allowed for that, would the elementary students still have to get out later? Because we're adding on a whole other half hour to the time that they're getting done, and I'm not really understanding, it's kind of like the history, from what I gather, of why we changed the school start time in the first place, was based on logic and fiscal reasons, as opposed to philosophy. And we've been talking about philosophical changes, the circadian rhythm and scientific, but also philosophical, and not doing it for money. I mean, for, for, you know, one, we don't want it to cost more money, but it just concerns me, just put it right out there, it just concerns me that we say, okay, we're going to change the elementary time. I don't think that we've had forums on that. I don't think that people have been discussing that, the communities, the PTOs, the school councils, and we've been discussing for a while, years, I guess, the NHS possible school start time changing and everything. And so if it's fiscally driven, then it's okay to not have the forums, and yet if it's philosophically driven, you know, with difference in ideas and benefits for students, then we have these forums?
I think it's always best to have forums and let people weigh in on changes.
But nobody knows. I mean, I've talked to people about the elementary school time possibly changing, and everyone I talk to is not aware of that. But they're aware that there's a start time, you know, school issue, a school issue, start time for the, for Hamp High, but nobody's aware of it going till 3:30, and I think, I mean, that could affect people a lot.
Right. Well, as I said, if that is a proposal to consider, I would want to go back to the public forums and have that vetted.
But aren't they all, isn't it in all of them, or did you change it back? I mean, because other than the first one, the proposal number two...
Yes, in all of them.
Yeah, they all changed. To me, it feels like it's just sliding by, as opposed to, I mean, we're trying to treat the whole child as a person.
I'm not understanding if there's a question of there or not.
I was talking about extending the day at the elementary school. To me, it just feels like it's just getting slid on in. There's not a forum, it's not being discussed, it's not going out there as far as how it will affect anybody, and yet Hamp High, we've been doing it, it's been going on for years, and it says that there's positive approaches and, you know, positive reasons for doing it and for changing the start time, and yet, and we do have those forums, but for the elementary school, we don't. I just don't understand why it's, we're not having forums and telling everybody, how's this going to affect you, and what do you feel about it, and how do the principals of the elementary school buildings feel about it, and how do the teachers feel about it? And yet we had all those forums for the high school. It just seems to me to be a cover of...
Ms. Pitt?
Oh, I'd like to address that concern, and then I'd like to make my own comments. Actually, extending the elementary school day is something that we have been talking about on and off for years, and Bridge Street actually had grant money where they ran forums and really discussed this in depth. We weren't able to move forward on it, but it is something that, that the administrative team, I think, has been looking at for a very long time. It's, I, I don't understand why we have a shorter day at the elementary school than we do at our middle school and high school, and it's really not equitable. It's something that would be negotiated with teachers, and it would be all pending negotiation. Remember, we're talking about doing something a year from now, almost a year from now. I, I don't think it's just sliding by, I think that it is something that's been raised quite a lot. We haven't had forums on it yet. We certainly would be talking to parents about it, and we have, not in maybe this, this go-round, but I think that this is something that we, that we, in retreats with the administrative team, have actually talked about for years. Well, I understand that it's been talked about and discussed, but what I'm talking about is the, is the, the meet, the out to the public. You said that it hasn't been, you know, discussed as of yet, but if we were to vote on proposal one, two, well, one is the same, but two or three is one the same. We would be changing it. They're all changed. Yeah, so it's automatically changing. This is what's being recommended for best learning at the elementary schools.
Remember, I presented that and spoke to it in August at the public forum, and I've been speaking to it all along.
But it's not, I mean, there's a lot of people that are not aware of it. I've talked to people about it, and there are not a lot of people from anywhere around that's, that's not aware of our dilemma with the high school start time.
So I guess, to respond to that, the, maybe the public forum wasn't enough, and I need to communicate it in a more, a larger variety of ways, so that more people are aware of what I proposed three months ago.
So why are we changing it? I mean, why, the bottom line of why do you want to change the elementary school time? I mean, I understand, but, but why do you want to change it?
It's educationally sound.
Okay, but the start, I mean, they have all the data, the data here stating that to start the high school at a, or at a later start time is educationally sound, too. But it just doesn't seem, it seems like when we have to do something because of the money, then we find a way to do it, but, I mean, or if it fits into our schedule.
This isn't about the money, though.
But, it's not about the money? No, this is...
No.
It's not about keeping the buses the same way as they've been? I mean, the schedule so that kids can... This was like a bonus, when, when the superintendent was looking at this plan, this was like an added bonus that we finally had a way to be able to do this. Right, but we haven't put it out to the public the way we have the, the start time changes. I just saw this really, I mean, I've heard about it, I've talked about, I mean, I've listened to it for a long time, but I just don't think that it's been out there. I haven't had any, you know, let's discuss at the elementary level what's happening. I'd love to hear from Ms. Minnick, because she's like our historian. She's going to have a spaz attack. Well, yeah.
I just, Mr. Meyer had his hand up first, so I apologize, but I, I know you were, but he did have his hand up for, for a while, so I...
So I want to thank the superintendent and the transportation director and the administrative leadership team for taking my suggestion and investigating it and bringing forward a new possibility. I hope that the change from 3:25 to 3:30, which is another five-minute adjustment later, will not cause the elementary school parents in their community to oppose this. But I really think that this extra time in the buildings is something that is a bonus. Good ideas have many parents, and I want to claim at least some parentage that, you know, and Lisa, you probably had it five times before I did, but when we were, when I was working with the interim superintendent to try to come up with some start times, I was hearing from people at Lead School, where I was quite often, about kids racing through lunch, about kids not having enough for, time for physical activity outdoors. We just went over the elementary school master schedule trying to increase time on learning. So there is, is a great need to increase time at the elementary schools, and I think that this is, that's an educationally sound idea, and I'm happy that the superintendent in arriving in this district is ready to push it forward from his experience in other districts in the state. The movement from 8:15 to 8:30 is also excellent in terms of providing sleep. You know, the, the study that I've looked at a lot is the one that says by the time our kids are 16 and 17, the middle of their sleep cycle is 4:45, and they should be getting eight to nine hours of sleep, which means that the time that they would be biologically waking up is around 8:45. So again, you can oppose the circadian clock, you can drink coffee, your parents can hit you over the head, but as medical residents had their schedules adjusted, because after years and years of being told that the culture just says you get up and you work harder when you're sleepy, that has completely changed, okay, in the past five to 10 years. Now they have rules about what you can be required to do. I think the same sort of logic applies to our students. You can't tough your way out of being exhausted. So I think 8:15 to 8:30 is moving things in the right direction. So I really hope that the superintendent does what he has suggested, go back to the community with this fourth possibility. It has, it has to have response from the community before we go forward, but I think it seems sound, and looking at the objections that have been raised before, it looks like it just might work.
Ms. Minnick and then Mr. Moore.
The, the birth of the times really came a number of years ago when the state put out requirements for time on learning, and it was six and a half hours at the secondary level and six hours at the elementary level. And we had to tweak some of our start and end times to lengthen the days at the, I can't remember whether it was the middle school or the high school, one of them was just a bit shy, and we had to lengthen that day, but we were already well situated with the other schools. That's why the discrepancy. It is a discrepancy. It's, it was based on what they felt students needed at the time for time on learning, but it does leave a discrepancy in the working day for teachers, and if you're looking at our teachers association with a block of teachers as a whole, there is some inequity there. And to the extent that there were issues at the elementary schools with scheduling, it seems like, and this was a convenient time, this was, has nothing to do with transportation, but it was, as we're looking at start and end times and our transportation system, it was a good time for us to look at the possibility of lengthening the elementary day, and I think you heard the superintendent say, it's not a fait accompli yet. It will have to be negotiated with the union. But I think it makes perfect sense. So that was my historical perspective on that, and I think I'll stop there.
Mr. Moore, and then Mr. Moore.
Yeah, I'd like to briefly, I just, there's a couple, couple of things to point out. I think probably the reason the JFK... I think probably the reason the JFK schedule is extra long, you know, five minutes more, was again about the bus schedule. I mean, anyway, there's always a few buses that are very late at JFK and they pick up in the afternoon. So my guess is they just lengthened the day because they couldn't get the buses here in time, even with starting them as fast as they could after NHS let out. And that really is what I want to talk about is the late bus. I think it's, I think it's, right now, right now, we have even less ridership from the high school in the afternoon than we do in the morning. And in the morning, we have a very low ridership regardless in terms of the percent of overall population. And the reason we have a really low ridership in the afternoon is because kids do stuff at school. And if, and in fact, there's a pretty reasonable thought that those kids who are riding the bus might prefer actually to be able to get help from their teachers or to be participating in clubs. This is not unreasonable. And given the fact that it's such a small number of kids, we might actually increase our ridership if instead of insisting upon a bus that left at three oh two, if you do propose number four, if you had a couple of buses that leave at four o'clock, which is what would be if, even with the extended elementary, because some of those routes are only 20 minutes long. If you don't have the extended elementary, then it's absolutely no issue to run a late, to just run the NHS buses later. You know, when people say, well, we have to do it right after school, it's like, well, actually, look at the high school. Running it right after school is probably why we don't have very many kids on the bus. We're busy running a bunch of empty buses away from the high school every afternoon. That seems pointless. And it would seem like a really worthwhile thing to explore, just not, not running a late bus and the regular bus, just run the regular bus late. I think you wouldn't see at least the same ridership. And you might actually have some, we talked about academic benefits of people being able to see their teachers after school. Because if you say it's 50 kids who currently cannot, that's 50 kids who could.
So just to clarify, are you suggesting that the NHS and elementary be transposed on the end of the day?
No. I'm very simply saying at the end of the day, the NHS buses would be the last buses of the day on any of these, on any of these both schedules, including the current schedule.
The end times for school are the same. The buses just don't run when school's out. They run.
They run an hour later or 40 minutes later or something, enough, whenever the bus schedule forces them to be. But rather than the bus schedule forcing them to be the moment school lets out, which deprives the kids who ride the bus of any opportunity to see their teachers, have it be whenever the bus schedule allow it to be after that. There's no additional cost.
I can look in. Well, it may be an additional cost. Do you want me to explain?
Sure. Explain how.
Well, I'm not sure, so I'm guessing here, but that's, I'll make an educated guess. The bus contract is bid on the number of hours that the buses and bus drivers will be working for us. And so when they, you know, we have the start times, so they're picking kids up at six thirty, six forty-five in the morning. Now, if we take the, the drop off schedule and extend it by a half an hour or an hour, we're increasing the number of hours that they're committed to us with their drivers and their buses, which could impact the cost of their proposal to us. See me?
Okay. You're all set, Mr. Born? Okay. Ms. Minnick?
I'm also concerned about the, the transfer. There, you know, right now, you said, there are some kids, very few, who ride the bus immediately after school, and there are a lot of kids who can't. If you switch it, there will be some kids who will ride the bus late, but there will be some kids who may be disadvantaged by not having a bus right after school. Those students who have a job after school that they need the bus to get them closer to, or those students who are responsible for childcare for their younger siblings, or I, I don't know what other, but those, that's an example of just two possibilities. So I mean, I'm concerned if we take away and make the bus not run until four o'clock. You know, if you're a great student and you don't need to visit your teacher for help, you just wasted an hour sitting on the curb.
Well, you can do your homework in the library. It's open.
Hopefully.
Ms. Vahl?
Well, I want to, I mean, I do agree that with an increase in the length of the elementary school day. It's not that I personally don't agree with it. I just find it a little bit, I don't know, almost hypocritical not to go to the public with what would work for them. Do you want an earlier start time for the elementary for it to go? I mean, we just haven't really discussed it. That's all I'm saying. I mean, I've talked to, I talked to a principal about it, Ms. Riddle, and she said that the number of hours that our elementary students stay in school are less than the average of the state. I mean, most people have more than the minimum of six hours. And that, I mean, I think it'd be great to have extra time, but I think that people should be asked, just as I think that people should be asked about with the bus. We had all these forums, whether or not a later bus would work for more people than not. Because you're not really, I mean, you may be inconveniencing and talking again about changing and shifting lifestyles and, you know, family things and stuff. But as far as the opportunity, what we have to provide is the opportunity for academic success. They can study. They can join clubs. They can become more enriched at that time. And from having gone through North Hampton High School and had a bus that left at three oh two and me walking many days because I just didn't make the bus, you know, or two thirty, I mean, it ended right after. It was run or you missed it. And at that time, they even had rules where, well, if you missed the first one and you happened to be on it, you were allowed to take another one because it came so darn early to accommodate everything, that even if it dropped you off closer, I mean, they let you do that at the time because they understood that there was a problem at the time. But I just think that that's something that needs to come out to the, to the public as far as that. Because the North Hampton High School start time, I don't understand really why we have to go back to the public and say eight thirty versus eight fifteen. I mean, because we've been discussing it all the way along.
Here's my, my question. We have a certain number of parents opposed to a longer school day at the elementary level, then we wouldn't do it? Is that the point or?
Well, no. My, you know what? I think that, I think that philosophically, we should do it. I think that if it's good for, advantageous for our students, then we should do it. But it's the same thing as far as the late school start. If it's advantageous for our students, then we shouldn't, we should do it. We shouldn't have to, last time, I think it was, they said sixty and sixty percent were against and 40% were for. Forty percent of the kids at our school that could even do better than we're doing may end up being the difference between, you know, a level two school and a level one school. When he was talking about that it's only like four, four people, that's that difference. And we can make those changes by just going with science.
Ms. Pick.
I'd like to bring, bring us back to the topic of proposals.
Okay.
To school start time. And I did have some remarks semi-prepared. We've been talking about this for a really long time. And we can argue about how many years we've talked about it. We can argue about how many forums we've had and all of that. I think that we have all heard all the information there is to hear. This school committee as a whole, last January, took a unanimous vote charging the superintendent, and thanks to Annie, I actually have the language, charging the superintendent to build a proposal to implement a school start time no earlier than eight o'clock to be instituted in the fall of 2013. And then we added that we wanted the plan to come to us, the proposal to come to us in September of 2012. I'd like to say that the superintendent did exactly what we asked him to do. We've all said that we agree with the research. Nobody is disputing anything that, that comes out of the research. We have, in the past, looked at this every which way we can, and we've never moved forward because we haven't been able to figure it out financially. When we took that vote, which was unanimous in January, it was my belief that when the superintendent devised such a plan, that we were going to vote that in because that is what we said we needed to do in this district and what was best for kids. In the process of his developing this plan, I thought it was great that he, he found a way to look at this whole lengthening the day of the elementary schools because it's something we've been talking about. I think it's something that gets vetted in the public as an informational, as informational meaning, as the same way other changes that we've made. Not everything is for the community to say, we want that or we don't want that. Sometimes we get to say, this is a choice that we're making for the district and we're going to inform you and we're giving you plenty of lead time for how, to think about how to implement this. I am only going to imagine, and we'll, you know, we'll be able to hear more about that, that parents in the elementary schools might be very, very pleased because look how many kids are taking advantage of after-school programs as it is now. So I think this is going to be more structured learning time, and I think that it's going to be a wonderful addition to our programming. It also allowed, and the research and the challenges that came from the, the community, it allowed our transportation director to look at how we place kids on buses. And it allowed us to change, to reduce the number of buses that we have, saving us some money. People have come to us and said, we don't need to change the time because look how well we're already doing for AP and art, and we heard so much about that tonight. We don't have a big tardy or absentee problem. I think that we do have a tardy and absentee problem. It might not be huge. I know that we can improve it. I will just tell you that my daughter would have skewed the statistics last week. She was absent one day and she was tardy two days last week. She has gone to bed between 11 and two o'clock every morning, except for the one night, I found her asleep on the computer at nine fifteen. She is staying up, she's taking a challenging course load. She is working very, very hard. She is staying up very late to do homework. She's getting up absurdly early to get ready for school. She is on the crew team, so she practices five days a week. She has regattas one day every weekend, sometimes two. At the same time, trying to interview at colleges. It is just crazy. And we, we all know that the majority of kids can't manage on that little sleep. I'm living with it day to day right now. This will not affect my kid. She's a senior. She's graduating. I wish it would have. She would tell you, we shouldn't change because she thinks that this is, I, I think that kids just don't understand sometimes what change can do for them. For the kids who say, I'm happy to get up in the morning and go to school, I say, great, that will give you an extra 45 minutes or whatever it is to study, to play music, to exercise, to do whatever it is that you would like to do with your 45 minutes because you are up early. It's not the majority of kids. So I just want to make sure I'm making my points here. I don't think, you know, if we give them, those kids that time, I don't think we're taking anything away from them. We're giving them 45 minutes in the morning that they can, they can use. It's my belief that this committee will not be fulfilling what we said that we would do when we gave this charge to the superintendent last year if we do not vote to change the start time at the high school to a later time. I am very pleased with proposal three. And I would be very happy to support that. And I am, I am strongly supporting that plan. It is one of the only times I can think of in my eleven years on the conference committee where I am choosing to vote against what the alt team is recommending. And I don't do that lately, and I don't think any of us do. We all say how important it is to us to work collaboratively with them and to hear what they have to say. And we, we have heard some of it. We know that the high school principal supports a later start time. And we also heard her very eloquently say last meeting that she is holding on to that K-12 perspective and wants to support her colleague in the middle school. I don't think that changing the times the way proposal three is, is stated is dismissing that K through 12 perspective. I think it's asking us to shift a little bit. It makes a negligible change at the middle school, at, at the elementary school. It makes a very significant change at the high school of 45 minutes. It makes a 15-minute change in the wrong direction for the middle school. It's still a start time that's 10 minutes later than what we do at the high school now. So the high school has been carrying this burden since we went to a three-tier system. It's not that I just want to shift the burden somewhere else, but I do think that the 45-minute advantage for four years outweighs the 15-minute disadvantage for three years at the middle school. So with no disrespect intended to anybody concerned at the middle school, whether it's the administrators, the faculty, the parents, the students, I am more comfortable with that than not making a change at the high school. The only way that I would not be, the only way that I would support not voting on option number three tonight is because we decide as a group that we want to hear more about option four, if that needs to be vetted further. I'm not sure how significant that 15 minutes is in making the, the day later. I do know that Nancy Athas did say a year ago, two years ago, however many times, that she thought eight thirty was too late. She thought that eight fifteen was as late as she wanted to go. It's, is that much more with the, with athletics? Is that much more that we have to worry about, you know, Smith College classes? It's that much, you know, later, later of a day? So I'm, I'm content with proposal three, but I'd be willing to hear more about proposal four if that's what the, the school committee wants to say. But I will not be pleased if we say we're not going to make a change at the high school.
Mr. Meyer?
My issue with moving the middle school students up is that the same paper that says the mid-sleep point for high school students is four forty-five says that for a 12-year-old, the mid-sleep point is three forty-five. So the middle school kids are actually getting to the middle of their cycle an hour earlier. Unfortunately, that doesn't help us because the sleep requirements for the 12-year-old are 10 to 11 hours versus eight to nine hours. So you have more sleep. So actually, our middle school students in an ideal world would be waking up at eight forty-five. So I actually did out minute by minute, going from age 11 to age 18. And again, you know, you might say if this is a linear relationship and that sleep lost always counts the same amount for each student, then I'd say, okay, we get net minutes on one side, we're good. But that's not how human development works. I mean, we know, and we know that for babies, that environmental insults are far worse at that age than they are developmentally later on. And when you've got the human brain 10 to 13, I don't think you can say it's the same thing. And I haven't had any research presented to me at all that says that's the case. What's even better is that now we have a proposal for us that the superintendent has said is possible, and I've not heard other objections programmatically, that keeps the middle school where it is, that moves, that even gets more benefit for the high school students and gets educational benefit for the elementary school students as well. So, and I hope that the, respecting the process, that superintendent's able to take this forward. But I would, I would say go forward, you know, send out number four and see, see if there's objections that would dissuade us from making the change, which I, for me, that would be hard to find, but I'd like to do that tonight.
So I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
To put out for discussion, okay? And we might need to tweak it a little. I'd like to make a motion that next month, that we vote on either option number three or option number four, and that we are going to choose one of those two. That's the motion that I would put out for discussion.
Okay. There's been a motion.
I'll second it for the purpose of discussion.
Okay.
That's it. I disagree. I disagree because we've just been pigeonholed into option number three or four by making, by having that motion. So I mean, I second it for the purpose of discussion.
Mr. Moore?
Yeah, I, I think, I think proposal number four is far better than proposal number three. The two-tier system thing, you know, I hate to keep saying this, but I'm using numbers that have been provided by our transportation coordinator. And when I add numbers up, there are fewer riders than there are seats in the vans, the big yellow buses, the MPS buses. There are, I do not understand the assertion that there simply is not space. There simply is. There's, there's, there are still empty seats, even by conservative estimates, even if you say 50 students per big yellow bus instead of 55, even if you recognize that not all the high school students would be on the yellow buses until after the elementary school students were off. This is before doing that, before getting the real numbers, there's empty seats. So I'm really been very frustrated with a year of being told things which I've yet to be shown the numbers. I have replied to these things saying, look, here's the way I add up the numbers, and I have yet to get anything other than, well, that's just not true. I would like to be shown it. It's arithmetic. It's arithmetic. I'm not a politician, but I gotta say that. And the, it is, it's arithmetic. I've added it up. You know, I was told the vans are completely full. Well, they're completely full as long as you leave a bunch of seats empty, I guess. Because I've been given the numbers of vans, I've been given the numbers of seats, and there are empty seats even again if you put all the high school students who ride the vans on with all the elementary school kids, there are empty seats. There are roughly 50 elementary kids who go on the vans, on these eight vans, so you know they're covering pretty much the whole city. So you're not talking about adding a lot of geographic coverage because 50 kids on eight vans in North Hampton, it's not that big of a city. There are enough seats for the 13 high school kids on those vans because eight vans is eight seats because elementary kids don't ride in the shotgun, high school kids do. And so, so, so the point is, you only need five or six more seats and guess what? You have them. You got more than a dozen empty seats.
So what's your point?
My point is, my point is, I'm really very frustrated with being told month after month after month that there are not enough seats to use two tiers for all riders. It's nonsense. There are enough seats for two riders.
But we have, we have.
The person who says, "I'm really fed up with not being told the truth." And I feel as a member of the school committee that this is really an insult and an affront to me and to everybody else. Instead of discussing nonsense about whether or not there are or aren't, when there are, we should have a meaningful discussion about things like whether or not you want to have elementary kids on the same bus with high school kids. Those are meaningful discussions and worth having. But to be essentially, over and over again, given numbers, which when I add, and I'm not a mathematician, but when I add numbers, I come up with empty seats. And I, and I really find this to be a problem. I'm not happy with it. I don't think the whole committee should be happy with it because these are the same numbers that you've been provided with for years. As Stephanie said last, at our last meeting, we've been told for years this is the only way to do it. And yet at the same time, we know there's only 100 and some kids riding the high school buses and we're told we have to have nine buses to transport them? I mean, this is, this is not good accounting. It's a waste of money. We're spending money to drive empty buses around North Hampton every single day. We look at money all the time. We're constantly trying to squeeze pennies out and yet we're told there are not enough seats for two tiers when we spend, we would save, we would save $45,000 on the vans.
Mr. Moore, could I just ask?
If we didn't went to two tiers. That's the vans.
State of the situation.
Could I just ask you?
Twenty-five thousand, excuse me.
I just wondered, would you yield to one of your colleagues who just wants to make a?
I have to leave, so I just didn't want to make like a quick exit out. I have to do a childcare replacement issue here, so.
Okay.
Good night. Enjoy.
Did you want to make some parting remarks before you?
Something. Yeah, I'm done with that rant. I'm just, you know.
Mr. Born.
I was just going to say that the superintendent said that you guys don't see eye on this. I'm going to trust the superintendent on this. Just, I appreciate you, you know, putting it's not what you think, but I'm going to trust the superintendent.
It's not what I think, it's not that I have an opinion. These are the numbers which we all have access to and they don't add up the way we're being told by the superintendent. This is not opinion. This is math.
Ms. Minnick.
I want to respect what you've said. I'm sorry that you feel that you haven't gotten appropriate information or timely information or clear-cut answers. I think there are, I think that in some respects, some of what you're doing is mixing apples and oranges because I believe that some of our van transportation is really contractual for special education purposes.
It's all special.
And it can't be mixed or not.
That's right.
Necessarily should not be mixed together. And I think we should be, if, if we needed to, we would be debating about whether to put mixed grades, mixed levels of school, students on buses or, or whatever. And I appreciate also the fact that you've said that we could save some money and we're trying to squeeze every penny out. You're right, it's important and I, I encourage you to keep trying and hopefully you will get the information that you need. However.
Got it, but then.
However, we have four proposals in front of us, two or three of which make sense and could be voted on within the next month without going back and getting a lot more information from the school department. So having validated your concerns and, and said that, that you deserve to be frustrated, I really think we need to leave it alone because I don't see around this table any support for a two-tiered busing system.
I understand that. I understand that people would rather not.
So if we don't have to go there, could we just consider the proposals that we have in front of?
I need everyone to, I need to sort of stop the cross-talk so we can, everyone has a chance to speak. So are you finished?
Yes, I'm.
Okay. Is there someone else who'd like to speak? Mr. Ball?
I just wanted to say that I do, I would support a two-tiered system, but I think that it becomes more than just, and I also do see empty buses all the time. So I think, but I think it's more than that. I think that it would really mean going to the community and really doing an outreach program. And I think that we need to make a decision and make a direction and the two-tiered system, I, I do, I would agree with it. I liked your plan right from the beginning. I'd like to say that. I, I think that elementary school students and high school students can ride together. I think though that it's been years in the making to get the school's start time and like Ms. Minnick said, we have some that may not be ideal but are pretty good on the table. But I do, I think that you've done a really good job as far as the research goes and I, and I would support that, so.
I'd like to say, it's not really my proposal. I got this proposal from the mother of a Ryan Rhodes student about three years ago.
There's a lot of smart people out there.
Yeah, that's right.
So just before I recognize you, I just want to remind people, there's a motion on the table. The motion on the table is that this body will take a vote at its next meeting between Option Three and Option Four. And I believe the assumption is that the superintendent in the intervening time will go out and do another forum on these, on the two choices so that people know about Number Four before we come back for that vote. So that's what's on the table.
Is that what?
That's what. I don't actually know that we need a forum on this. I don't think that it's a significant change that warrants. I do think it warrants hearing from the high school about whether 8:30 is as viable as a start time for them as 8:15 because I am remembering what Nancy did say about that. That would be my concern.
Okay. I was just reflecting what the superintendent had said.
Right. And so I would ask, you know, if you wanted to comment on why you think of, why we would need to vet it with the whole community to make it just a little bit later when it wouldn't change the other schools significantly, it wouldn't change the middle school at all.
Well, for the main reason that, I think it would be fair and it only takes me 90 minutes one night to do it and that's 90 minutes well spent.
So you would hold one forum at the high school for high school parents about whether?
For the public, anybody.
Or primarily it would be for, for people involved in the high school to say whether 8:15 rather than 8:30 and ending at 2:45 rather than 3 o'clock.
Right. And I would also take, in addition to the forum, I would take it specifically to the high school faculty to talk to them about it. Yeah.
So I, Mr. Born had his hand up before I, and then Ms. Minnick.
I'm not sure if this is exactly what Stephanie meant, but I'd be willing to say that, that at the next meeting, I'd be willing to vote for an earlier start time. It's just a matter of which of these two proposals it's going to be.
Later start time?
I mean, a later start time, yeah. So not that we're going to vote on these two proposals and see which one, but to say that we're going to change the start time, it's a matter of which of these two proposals it's going to be. That's what I would, I'd be, would be ready to do.
Ms. Minnick.
Is there any support for Proposal Number Two? Was there any? And I want to say that I said at our last meeting that I would support Proposal, when we didn't have a Number Four, when we were still only, you know, One, Two, and Three, I said, "I would have supported Number Two except for the fact that the elementary school started so late." And it never occurred to me, nor was it ever, was the issue ever raised, that there are possibilities for a before-school program that would deal with that late start time for elementary school. If people thought that there were a possibility for that, is anybody interested in Number Two or is that really a non-starter? In which case Stephanie's motion makes sense. That's, I guess what I'm asking is just for a straw poll if there's any support for Number Two.
I would say for Number Two, just, there already is a before-school program people pay for and people complain to me about how they have to pay for it already with a 9 o'clock start, so, you know, I don't, you know, that's why I don't look at it as a positive.
Did that satisfy your inquiry? Okay.
Should we call a question?
I'll just weigh in.
Okay.
I, I do have a little bit of a concern with taking Proposal Number One off the table. I'm not a, I'm not 100% proponent of Proposal Number One, but I would say that now when we look at Proposal Number Four, changing the elementary school from 8:50 to 9 o'clock, I have met with parents and any change that moved later into the morning was going to be a little burdensome. And so I do appreciate the superintendent saying, "Give the public an opportunity to come out and be heard and to speak." And I'll go back to what Mr. Ball said as well, that, you know, the elementary schools may not be aware of the change on the later end of the afternoon and certainly they may not be aware of the 10, the 10-minute change as well later into the morning. I know when I spoke to parents several years ago, any change from the 9 to 5 schedule of the working parent that they were already stressed out with because they were just making the time now, that 10 minutes could be a difference to them. And I think that it's worth letting them hear about it and having an opportunity to come out and comment on it. I'm also still concerned about the athletics in the afternoon. I did see the athletic director a few weeks ago here at a parent at an open house and he did mention, after watching the school committee and shifting the, the afternoon release for the high school later into the afternoon, that I do believe, I heard from him, that he thought it was going to be problematic and that he was going to talk to the superintendent about it. I don't know if he has or not. So I do think that giving the superintendent an opportunity to hold one more forum, have the athletic director, have parents come, anybody that would like to hear and talk about it certainly would be beneficial and would be the way to go. That's what I would support, but I cannot support taking Proposal Number One off or even Number Two off because I agree with you that if we look at Proposal Number Two, it's academically sound on probably the most, on most of the levels. And if we're saying that 9:20 start time is too much for elementary school parents, then are, are we saying that a 9 o'clock start time isn't? And I think it just, it's worth hearing from, it's worth hearing from parents.
Mr. Self.
I, I agree with the idea, I've said it more than once, that I don't think enough people know some of the changes that we're talking about. I think it's been, it's become known as a school, as a high school start time issue and it's really not. It's a district-wide issue, so I would really support the idea of having another forum to vet Number Four. I think there are probably people out there watching and jumping through their television saying, "I can't believe they're still talking about this. Hasn't this been settled?" But I don't think these are insignificant issues and these are the things that we have to consider. I know that, that people have talked about how other schools have been able to make this change, so how come we haven't? I happen to work in a school that a couple of years ago made it, made its change of start time, went from 8 to 8:30. We were able to do it because we didn't have to worry about busing. We didn't have to worry about the middle school because we just changed the middle school, too. So I just want to, I just want to say that, that I think this is a healthy discussion to have and I think we need it. Granted, I'm new to the party, I've only been worried about this for, you know, 10 months now, but I think it's a good thing to have. The other thing I want to mention that I got a little bit concerned about, and it also struck me when, when I saw the great, heard about the great AP numbers, we're hearing about the dire things that, that are happening because the start time at the high school is so early. And, and I'm not disputing the, the science on it at all, but I'm just a little bit concerned that a later start time won't be able to deliver on all the promises that people think are going to be wrapped up with it. I mean, we've heard everything from, we're going to be safer on the streets when, when people are driving to it's, it's somehow going to alleviate people's ADD symptoms. And, and I don't mean to belittle that at all, I'm just saying that based on my experience when I was at a school where the start time changed, yes, we did see improvement in some areas, but we didn't see skyrocketing test scores, we didn't see, it wasn't like that Coca-Cola commercial where everyone's hugging all the time because everyone's so happy, you know? Things do improve, but I think, I just have to temper that. All that said, I do support the motion on the table to say, yes, at our next meeting, we're going to vote for one of these. I am still uncomfortable with the idea of saying that we want the middle schoolers to take one for the team, so to speak, because I think that's just, just continuing what we're all recognizing is, is a bad practice. So I just wanted to put that up.
Okay. So we have a motion on the table. The motion on the table is that at its next meeting, the school committee will, will take a vote on a choice between Option Three or Option Four.
I have a question on that. What if he comes back and, and Brian comes back and says, "Well, this all got brought up and, I mean, are we like tough, vote or not?" Because I think that it's, you know, like Mr. Sheppel said, people turn in and say, "Oh, you're still talking about it." But this is a really important issue to work out all the details and define, you know, it's a, it's a perfect time to get it right. I would like to think that we can also discuss at the forum, a later bus time for the high school, you know, I mean, how people felt about just moving the bus and having kids just be there because they're old enough to be there.
I'm going to look into that anyway.
But, but my concern with saying we have to vote on it is what if it's not right? I mean, do we still have to vote on it?
So much for my battery.
I mean, what if you, what if the superintendent comes back and says, "Look, we have these issues and there's more problems or there's more questions." Or, "Look, it opened this door and you didn't know it." I mean, I'm totally for changing the start time, but I, one, I think that we should do it with people, too. I think we should check to see about the, a late bus and whether or not that is a priority for the high school students. And three, to really make sure the elementary school, you know, that they're okay with the start, with the start and the end time. And I don't, I mean, I don't have a problem with the start time because I think a couple of years ago, it was kind of 9 o'clock and this, my daughter always went to school.
Yeah, I think, I think if you're uncomfortable with that choice, then the option is to just not support the motion tonight, but that's.
Okay, that's my question.
Yeah. Ms. Minnick?
I think I probably am not in favor of the motion only because I don't like being locked into Three or Four. And I don't like being locked into next month. I'm, I think I'm in favor of changing the start. I think I could vote for Number Four without a problem, but I really don't want to be tied down to that, so I probably will vote no against Stephanie's motion. However, I would like to make a special request also that as the superintendent is taking this to a forum and getting all the other information, that he actually bring us a, a recommendation or a, a sense of what the administrative leadership team thinks about it with the simple reason that I, I like, I, I don't know for sure, but I'd like to say that their, that their opposition to the, the, to having any change was because they were trying to maintain the K-12 philosophy and not disadvantage one group of students to, to provide benefit for another. And I'd like to see if they believe that the 10-minute disadvantage later to elementary students is of the same sort of effect or impact that a 15-minute earlier start, start time was for the middle school students. I'm, my guess is they will say it's not the same and I hope that they could support, but I would like to know what their feeling is on Number Four.
Okay. Mr. Born.
I was just going to say, I think one concern is how long we just let this drag on for. If we don't vote next month, I mean, are we still going to be kind of going through this six months from now? I mean, that's, that's the reason to say, "We're going to, we're going to take care of this one right either next month and that's going to be it. Let's get it."
And so I.
The other, the other thing I want to say is, I think we have a forum, we really need to think about how we get good participation because oftentimes we do these forums on 35 people. So it's just, they sound great, but you don't get, you don't really get the word out in it in a productive way, so.
Didn't, didn't we hire somebody to do PR for the district? Can't we write a press release somewhere?
We didn't hire somebody.
So, so I have a number of hands. Mr. Meyer, then Ms. Pick. Well, I, I understand the motion's intent to, to bring this to a conclusion. However, I would believe that even if we voted no on Three and Four at the next meeting, that any member could make a motion, have it seconded to move another proposal forward. I mean, we're not, we're not, we can't tie our hands. So in that respect, I would say, let the superintendent go and vet the proposals that we have suggested and bring back to us the full slate. Because again, if we, if we want to have Number One, we could vote no on Number Two. again, if we, if we want to have number one, we could vote no on number two, no on number three, and then, since we've already decided that extending the elementary school day is a good idea, number one is there by default. So I would vote against the motion, just because I don't think it could be effective in bringing about what it's trying to bring about. The only way that we cannot confront this is for, whenever someone makes a motion about start time, for nobody to second it. And with this group, that will never happen.
So return to the maker of the motion.
If I were home, I wouldn't be jumping through my TV. I would have thrown it out the window a long time ago. If I had had my druthers, I would have, I would, I would be asking for a vote on proposal number three tonight and being done with this tonight, because I think that we have vetted out as, almost as much as we possibly could. And I'm fine with three. I don't think that proposal one should even be on the table, because it doesn't do what we asked the superintendent to do. We, as a group, decided unanimously that we wanted to change the start time at the high school to a later time. Proposal number one does not do that. I would not vote for proposal number two, because I think that the elementary time is way too late at nine twenty, no matter what we come up with before that. And getting out at ten o'four for an elementary school student, I think, is absurdly late. It's just too long a day for them, because they are up early in the morning. So to me, those two are off the table, and that's why I came up with the motion that I came up with. So, like I said, in spite of the fact that it pushes our middle school students up by fifteen minutes, I am in complete support of proposal number three and would vote on it tonight. I am really concerned about how wishy-washy this committee is getting. And I don't mean that disrespectfully. We're asking a lot of important questions, but we've been asking them for years. And we've gotten the answers. And, you know, whether or not we have a late bus at the high school isn't really part of this proposal. That's something that we can look at after we take this vote.
To change the.
I actually don't like proposal number four, but if people feel, I made the motion that I made, because I felt like if people felt strongly, if they wanted to hear more about it, that we should. I think, I think that pushing the elementary school even that much later is hard. If you have a job in North Hampton that starts at nine o'clock, you want to drop your kids off before that time. I think that's a hard time for the elementary. And, again, I, I'm thinking that eight thirty is going to be too late in terms of what happens at Smith College and what happens for sports. And I think that the principal said that that was too late. If I were going to put a different motion on the table, I'd say I'd vote on number three right now, but I don't think that we have that vote, so I'm not going to do that. If somebody wants me, I don't think that it would pass. And I really don't even understand why we're, why all of these are still on the table. I'd like to at least reduce it somehow. And I'd be happy to find some way to do that tonight. I will take, I will rework my motion, if that's what we need to do. But I don't want to be looking at something that's not making the high school time later, when we have proposals that allow us to do that. That's not what we told the committee itself we would do. It's not what we asked the superintendent to spend all this time on. In the meantime, he has spent an inordinate amount of time on this over, during his first year, when this was not his priority. Look at the amount of time that we have spent on that, when we have so many really other important things that we need to be getting to. I really think it's time to bring this to a close. I'm willing to go one more month. I'm not willing to go more than that. I just don't think that we've learned anything that vital that is worth going more than that. I don't even want to go one more month.
Okay. So, Mr. Moore?
Yeah. I just want to point out that in June, we were at a forum where there was enough room on the yellow buses for all the students. The problem was, there wasn't enough space on the vans. I got the van numbers a few weeks later, took two weeks to get those numbers, and discovered, lo and behold, there was enough room on the vans. And yes, there are separate population, but there's enough room on the vans for them. Now I find out again on this thing, there's not enough room on the buses several months later. Well, there was enough in June, okay? So that's my first problem with that. Second thing, with the two-tier proposal, everybody's saying they're worried about the elementary schools being too late. With the two-tier proposal, the elementary schools go first at a time like eight, ten, or eight fifteen. The high school goes after at a time ten or fifteen minutes later. And the JFK goes roughly half an hour after that. It puts all the start times between eight and nine, nobody before eight, nobody after nine. It puts the high school at eight fifteen, or eight twenty, or eight thirty, which is all within the range of what we've been talking about. You know, I'm going to really support number four, because apparently, everybody else doesn't think the two-tier thing is, but it's interesting. All the objections to, all the things that are on our current list of four are answered by the two tiers, including cost. It costs less, because it's two tiers instead of three. You know, the phenomenal thing is, somehow or other, we can't do that. When you're talking about the committee being wishy-washy, yeah. You know, that's the interesting thing. We're complaining about stuff. The answer to those complaints is in front of us, but we can't do it, because we've been told we don't have enough seats, except we were also told we did have enough seats in June. So, you know, all in all, I find this to be a very frustrating part of this discussion. Does anybody else have anything else they need to say before I just call the question on?
We can just, actually, we can.
Because otherwise, I'd like to call the question.
Well, I just wanted to say that it doesn't necessarily have to mean wishy-washy to prolong it. Doesn't, I mean, we have to have the right answer. I would be willing to vote on three or four tonight also, but the superintendent says that he wants more time to discuss it. And I think the elementary schools would definitely have, you know, discuss what's best for them. I do agree with Ms. Pick, though, that number one is non-responsive. I mean, it doesn't make a change. We did unanimously decide to make a change, and I think that we should stick with that. And I think, right now, the two-tier system is just, is just bad.
Don't understand why, because it answers everybody's objection.
So why don't we, why don't we vote on the motion that's on the table, see, and then see what happens from there, and then we can talk about other. Ms. Minnick?
I'm concerned about something that I've heard said several times here. I do not believe that we unanimously said that we wanted to make a change and instructed him to bring us a proposal that would work. I believe that we said for him to bring us a proposal, and we didn't say, make it happen, because we wanted to see the proposal and have the opportunity to make a decision, one way or the other, that could have meant not doing it at all, which is proposal number one. So, and I could be all wrong, but my recollection of our vote is not that we said, we're definitely making a change, just come bring us a proposal. It's, we'd like to make a change, but we want to know how we can do it. Please bring us a proposal.
We have a piece of paper in front of you.
Just saying.
Okay. So.
I have a question of just whether or not, if we do vote positively, affirmative for her, and next month, superintendent comes back and says, oh, my gosh, we need one more month because of such and such. Have we blocked ourselves into having to vote for it next month? I mean, those are just rules.
As.
Can always be another motion.
Exactly. Yes. Yeah. Yep. And, you know, three and four could both get voted down, and then you'd be back to the drawing board of deciding what to do next. So, yeah, it does not, it's not as binding as.
Not as binding.
Yeah. Okay. So, the motion on the table, again, is that, that at the next meeting, the committee will, the choices will be narrowed between option three and option four, and the committee will take a vote between those two options. So all those in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Actually, I'm going to ask for a roll call vote on that, just because it's, it's late.
Mr. Howard Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Stephany Pick?
Yes.
Mr. Andrew Schelfer?
Yes.
Mr. Edsah House?
No.
Mr. David Narkwais?
Yes.
Mr. Alden Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Uval?
Yes.
Mr. Michael Flynn?
Mr. Danny Meyer?
Aye.
Ms. Minnick?
No.
Motion passes.
Okay. So, so we'll be back next month, and we will revisit the issue next month.
And make the motion to extend our meeting until one fifteen?
All those in favor of extending the meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
I would like to restate the task, to make sure I understand what I'm doing. My understanding is that we are only looking at proposal three and proposal four, and I'm going to look at the details of these two plans, offer a public forum for the public of any level to come and weigh in on this, and also take it to the high school, to the faculty specifically, and the administration.
To the alt.
In addition to taking it to the high school, I'll take it to alt and get their opinion on it, once again, and be back next month with that information.
Any other? A little. Back again.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving right along. The next item on the agenda is a gift. This is from the North Hampton High School class of nineteen fifty-two, and requires a vote for the school department to accept the gift. Mr. McLaughlin, would you like to, you're noted on here as describing this.
I'll just read it. For the record, the class of nineteen fifty-two is celebrating their sixtieth anniversary reunion. They've approached us with a gift donation from their class for North Hampton High School. The gift is a US flag on a pole with stand for the auditorium stage. Flag is complete, made in America. It is three feet by five feet on an eight-foot-high solid oak pole.
Price of that being four hundred dollars.
Make a most of that.
So there's been a motion made and seconded. Ms. Minnick?
With our gratitude, to accept the gift. And I'd like to jump in here and make a motion that we suspend our rules to continue meeting for another twenty minutes.
We just voted on that.
You actually voted to do that?
No, I did not. I'm sorry. I did not do that. We motioned, we seconded, we voted. Sorry.
So, so then, there's been a motion made and seconded to accept this generous gift from the class of nineteen fifty-two. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. The next item is a gift from the Community Foundation of Western Massachusetts. And again, I will ask the business manager to describe this gift.
And again, I'll read it for public benefit and for the committee. It is a pleasure to enclose a check for seven thousand dollars to the North Hampton School Department, restricted to the North Hampton High School Studio Theater Project, commonly known as the Black Box Theater. This grant is from the Community Foundation of Western Mass on the recommendation of an anonymous donor.
Kind of the acceptance. Second?
Okay. Is there any discussion of this gift? Okay. So all those in.
Do we accept restricted gifts?
Most certainly, we can. Yes. You have the option to say no, but we, you know, we accept NEF grants that are, you know, awarded for certain things. Ms. Minnick?
Just out of curiosity, I assume that superintendent or his designee is sending a thank you letter to these clubs for their gifts. Of course.
Okay. All those in favor of accepting the gift, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. The next item on the agenda is the superintendent evaluation criteria and evidence.
So the superintendent evaluation committee has met several more times since we spoke with you last. Twice, twice since our last meeting. If you remember, at the last meeting, I told you that we were going to be discussing which of the ten elements from the rubric we would be choosing for evaluation purposes for next year. And I offered to any of you to come and work with any of us on the committee, if you had any questions or concerns or thoughts based on the last round of evaluation. We did not hear from any of you, but we did go through, through this with the superintendent over two meetings, and we have chosen ten elements. I believe seven of them are the same that we used this year, and three of them are new. You have in your packet, did you get, did they get the highlighted rubric?
They do. They have the rubric highlighted in yellow. No, extra edition on blue folder.
With the, with the ten elements highlighted of the ones that we chose for this year. Because of the hour, I'm not going to go into the specifics about which ones we chose and why and all the rest of it, but we thought that this was more relevant. We thought that some of ours from last time might have been a little bit redundant.
There we take your own good role.
We did a good job. And this was the three of us meeting with the superintendent, and we chose these together.
Yeah, the next evaluation.
We have a date. I mean, we know it was going to be accelerated from this year. We're going to try and move it forward, right?
It had to be.
You should do the evaluation in April. Read it into the record in May, so that any changes of the contract would be in place by July first.
So you can take a look at these ten highlighted elements and be paying attention to them over the course of the year.
We also should be doing it in the spring, because I don't know about with this particular kind, I'm just, in general, we have to let someone know if we're not renewing a contract, so we have to be doing it in a timely fashion.
Right.
To know whether the evaluation says we're not renewed.
Right. In addition.
Not this year, but after that.
Similarly to everybody who's going to be using a new evaluation tool, the superintendent needed to write to SMART goals that we would also be using in his evaluation. We, everybody needs to choose one for professional practice and one that has to do with student learning. The superintendent wrote two under each category. We have discussed them at length. They have been written and reworked to the point where you have this in your packet as well today. The evaluation committee has discussed these at length, and we are, we have ones that we want to recommend, but we thought that it was most appropriate, since this is new, for you to see what all of them are. So, under professional practice, the first one has to do with something that came up through the evaluation process that we did this year, which was about building relationships with the business community and advocating for funds and, not just monies, but resources from our business community.
Support.
And developing a more collaborative relationship with our business community in and around North Hampton. And the second choice has to do with a commitment to observing principal practice for the purpose of mentoring and guiding. And the goal is to have three observations of each principal on a quarterly basis, which is more than what has been done in the past. These are both goals that the superintendent is going to be working toward anyway, but we need to choose one with him as a SMART goal. Under student learning, and I'll just go through all of them, and then we can open it up a little bit, but probably maybe not too much tonight, based on the hour. Under student learning, one is more specific and has to do with something that we heard some about tonight. One has to do with getting, helping Bridge Street School with getting out of the level three status. Although that's not a specific part of the goal. And it says that by May of two thousand thirteen, all students at Bridge Street who received a warning or needs improvement on their third-grade math MCAS will increase their performance by at least ten percent during the fourth grade. And speaks about how that will be measured. And we talked about a number of students that this would, you know, that are being targeted, and there's a very specific plan in place for how Bridge Street School is going to address that goal. The second goal was a little bit broader, and it said by May of two thousand thirteen, eighty percent of all students in the fifth and sixth grade will receive standard-based mathematics instruction with an inclusion setting through a co-teaching model. And that was about increasing, or I should say, decreasing the amount of pull-out time and increasing the amount of inclusion time at those two levels. And again, both of these things are being looked at and worked on, but one has to be chosen as a SMART goal. I would ask the superintendent if, how, if you want this decided tonight, or if you want to hear back from people after they've had a chance to think about it next meeting, given the. back from people after they've had a chance to think about it next meeting, given the hour. What would be your pleasure in that?
Well, the recommendation of the committee was that we would look at A in both categories.
That was the recommendation.
And if you would like to vote that tonight, you know, that you could probably easily do that if you want everyone to look at it, think about it, talk about it, and come back next month, you can do that.
So the three of us with the superintendent do recommend the first of those two goals in each category. If the committee would be comfortable in voting that recommendation without a lot of discussion, we can do that tonight.
Mr. Mark.
Yeah, I was wondering, the understanding, when we got the whole scheme of evaluation presented to us a year ago, that the goals would be your goals, that really that wouldn't require us to, you know, the individual teachers, for example, would present, you know, figure out their goals.
Right.
But, you know, there wouldn't be somebody then telling them that those goals weren't their goals.
These are not for a vote.
That's what I was going to say. So it's not something for us to vote on, the goals. But it just got presented as though we were going to vote tonight.
We, as a group, felt that we weren't necessarily charged with doing this without feedback from the whole committee.
This model is similar to what a teacher would undertake with a school principal.
That's right.
So if we think of ourselves as a principal and, you know, superintendent as our pupil, then it would...
Our lead teacher.
The superintendent is the principal.
And, you know, I think that's the model that we're trying to follow.
So we're not voting on it?
Right. And so I, as a professional, will go to my principal with my SMART goals and tell him those things that I'm working on, and then he'll measure me on my portful.
What are you thinking?
Right. So I think that's kind of the model we're following.
Right. So I'm thinking we don't need to vote on this ever, actually. We just ended with it, right?
We want, we want, we're the chair that you have charged us as a committee to decide on these with the superintendent, and therefore we brought it back for some, to see how you all...
So...
In other words, a principal, superintendent works with the principal, the principal works with the teachers. He works with us as a committee or us as a group that goes with us, and that's why it came back tonight. We were hoping to be able to vote on the first of each of these, but we didn't know where it would go.
So I would entertain a motion.
Not vote. I said that wrong.
Okay.
Yes. I was going to say, there doesn't need to be a motion.
Okay.
If we're all in consensus.
Okay.
You're comfortable with the committee working with the superintendent.
Okay.
So does anybody not agree with A and A?
I don't agree with A and A.
He's going to do all this stuff, so it's not...
Yeah, I know. I just think that B for the student learning is because it includes all the kids, and I also think it's kind of a loftier goal.
More difficult. What the committee discussed, because we did have that discussion about one being more general than the other, is that A is actually an imperative for the district right now.
Right. So why not concentrate on B because A has to be done?
Because we have to.
You're a mall anyway. That's the type of superintendent we have.
We would be making everybody be better.
Because we have, we have to focus on...
A has to be done anyway.
We're going to grade it on.
You know, A has to be done. You don't have a choice there. So I think that B should be the goal.
Okay. So are there other comments about this? I'm not sure how you wish to proceed. You set up a committee to do this evaluation.
I thought we, if the group is comfortable with the committee working this through with the superintendent.
Okay.
And Strappel?
Well, actually, I think all we can do, since, again, with the goals anyway, and maybe not with the evaluation criteria, but with the SMART goals, seems like all we could do would be sort of to converse, so that what you said would be considered by Brian as he decides what his goals are going to be. But it's pretty much, as I understand the process, it's the person saying what their goals are going to be. And then, in, you know, on an individual basis, it's not the principal telling the teacher or the superintendent telling the principal. It's the principal telling the superintendent what their goal is. That's what I always understood.
But it just has to be clarified so we know what the goals are, so...
All four of these are goals of mine. You just get to grade me on only two of them, not all four of them, so...
Two of them are part of the evaluation process for next year.
Well, see, that's why I think B would be more, would be better to grade you on than A.
Actually, we do a, do we do a Strappel?
I like what we do with B.
Can I make a motion that we evaluate the superintendent on A and A?
Let's take a vote.
That's fine.
We're just, what we're really wanting to hear is...
It could be a non-binding, non-binding resolution.
Would you just go around and say what we think are the best goals for him?
That's a good idea.
Alden, what do you think?
I would say A and A.
I like A and A.
I like B and B.
I like A and B because if you...
B and B, too.
You get 80% of all students, if you're doing 80% of all students and it's going to include the Bridge Street School in math, I mean, at least in the fifth grade level. I just think it's more inclusive.
I support the committee and superintendent's recommendation, A and A.
A and A.
I'm one of, I'm happy to support A and A, but I'm one of the ones who wanted to bring it to you only, not so much to get everybody else's opinion, but so that you could see the level of commitment that our superintendent has. And he's already said that he is going to do all four of these, it's just a matter of which two he gets graded on. So I really think that we, you can use whatever sports metaphor you like, this was a home run, he's a touchdown, we've...
You don't hear you so much.
He's, you know, an ace. I think we are very lucky to have a superintendent of this caliber.
I'm going to interrupt to make another motion that we need to extend. Second.
You extended it till 11:30.
I said 11:50.
Well, we have a minute, so, okay, go ahead.
How long does your manager's report, business manager's report going to be?
I would just extend it till 11:30.
No later than 11:30.
Okay. So there's been a motion made to extend the meeting to 11:30. Is there a second? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Okay. Mr. Meyer. A and A. Okay. Okay. So the sense of the committee is...
As Lisa said, this was really about bringing you into the process. The superintendent has been very, very thoughtful. He has heard all the feedback that came through the evaluation process. He brought back more choices than he needed to. He didn't do himself a favor by doing that. But what I'm hearing is that the majority of people seem comfortable with what he is choosing.
They're all less goals. They're all good goals.
I'd just rather grade them on 50.
Okay. So now we'll move on to the business manager's report.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10.
Wait, 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 wait.
Do we have money? Yes or no?
Okay. Are there any questions concerning the business manager's report that was in your packet?
I would just say in regards to the nutrition guidelines, my concern more was about spending and whether or not we were on target with our spending and not so much the nutritional report, because I do understand that the guidelines that are in place require us to serve food differently than what we did before. I just wanted to know, is that becoming more difficult to pay for? That's all.
With vegetables and more vegetables and, you know, more fruits, the general answer to that is yes?
I'd like to see Carol present this with last year's numbers versus this year's number. I know it's preliminary, but maybe by December or January she could come in.
Oh, I was just... You know, in January, yeah, because then we'd be able to have three or four months under our belts and make the comparison. But you needed to see this, because these instructions here and these guidelines are so difficult to meet and obtain right now. They're redoing everything from scratch, because if you can see one ounce, two ounces of meat, one ounce, a half a cup, in the equivalent values, this is a whole new learning experience for everybody in food service to try to reach and meet these guidelines. That's why you have them presented in a couple different ways to you. So you see what they're working with and how they have to work in the calorie intake and the minimums and the maximums, and the mixes of everything there.
Mr. Moore? Oh, sorry.
We talked about this before, too, but I want to make sure this, is this really true, that we actually have to put food on trays even if the child says they will not eat it?
Correct.
And then throw it away?
Yes. What they do with it after they leave the line is they've paid for that in whatever form, lunches or paid lunch. That's how we have to diligently serve the food. What they do with it afterwards is the student's option.
Okay. Any other questions regarding the, Mr., I'm sorry.
I need to speak up in there, too, because Ms. Skowsky asked a question about athletics and food service, and I believe deserves an answer before January, and I thought we had talked about having the athletic director and food service director make a presentation, at least the budget and property prior to that time. I think we should review the numbers sooner than January.
I thought we did discuss that, and we were going to do that in budget and property coming up whenever the meetings were decided.
Right.
Except for meetings are old, not to infringe upon the prime.
We can get answers sooner, and more detail.
And I know, again, speaking about our committee here, that, you know, what we hear in budget and property subcommittee, we might want to have a larger discussion at a full committee, so there's been some, you know, change of practice of whether or not things get sent to subcommittee versus having the, you know, have that issue come before the entire committee. So I don't know which way you want to go with it, but I would like to get a report at some point.
Yeah.
I always had a question on the new requirements, K through 12, the three-quarter cup to one cup, it's right up the top corner, and then it said, no, students are allowed to select half a cup of fruit or vegetable under OVS?
Because there's six pages, what page are you on?
First page, right here. I just want to know, I mean, is there a choice? Do they have choice so that there's less thrown away? And are we seeing if there's more being thrown away?
Can I recommend, based on time, that this is a discussion that, I mean, this is important. I think the whole diet thing is important, and we need to hear from Carol, but I don't think we have the time to go into the details, because I would have a lot of questions about it.
So we are going to have a presentation, though, at some point from...
Are they allowed to select or not? It's all, just a quick question. No, okay.
Right.
Okay. So any other questions about the business manager's report? Okay. Personnel report, that's also included. Are there any questions about the personnel report that's included? Okay. Hearing none, I will ask the superintendent to deliver his report.
Momentarily lost it. All right. Given the fact that I am not a teenager and I am not experiencing an energy surge, I will give you the highlights of the highlights. Our highlights this month are focused on academic challenge in our classrooms. And so, though I have many, I'm going to post them online and just give you a few right now. At Bridge Street School, Mr. Dion's fifth grade class recently studied the Constitution of the United States of America. The class learned all about how the Constitution came about and the events of the Constitutional Convention in May of 1787. After reading the preamble to the Constitution, the class decided to take on the challenge of rewriting the preamble so it would make sense to any fifth grader who wanted to read it. Over at Ryan Road, fifth graders in Mr. Greg Kurstetler's class decided together to measure the radius of a flower head and then use the formula for the area of a circle that they had learned in math to find the area of the head in square inches. And then they would estimate the number of seeds in the sunflower, how many seeds would be there, and then count it to find out if they were accurate. After approaching the puzzle, they began to ask, what is pi, anyway? Where did it come from? And the lesson went into the history of pi. At Lead School, Becky Lai, a Smith College student, will be working with Lead School kindergarten classroom this fall. She's going to work with the kids on the chemistry of color, and they will do experiments into the chemical concepts of separating colors using paper chromatography to separate individual colors into natural and artificial dyes. That's our elementary school. And moving rather quickly, at JFK in grade eight, the Carbonite Science recently did model building exercises pertaining to plate tectonics and earthquakes, and that will culminate in a design challenge where student teams are tasked with constructing a multi-story building that can withstand a simulated high-magnitude earthquake. Knowledge of modern engineering gained in this activity will support investigations of how humans in modern society are impacted by other natural disasters experienced regionally and over the world. Finally, I'm going to go out and go on. At the high school, Trish Armstrong, in wellness, has students studying lifestyle factors that promote health, disease prevention, happiness, quality of life, and longevity. They compared the lifestyles of people 50 years ago and 100 years ago to the modern American lifestyle, looking at contributing factors such as how we eat, exercise, and work. For their projects, the students are conducting wellness interviews with their teachers and their superintendent. And we're invited to assess our level of wellness, provide support in areas where needed. Couple of announcements this week. Mark McLaughlin, Lori Farkas, Pam Plummer, Kelly Knight, and myself attended the annual school legal issues workshop sponsored by the Collaborative for Educational Services. And I want to remind the school committee and the general public who are still with us that on October 24th, we will have our first all-district two-hour late start for teachers to work in their professional learning communities. And because we've done this at the high school last year, now district-wide, I will be doing a Connect Ed call to remind families on Monday, the 22nd. So they will be aware. That's all for the superintendent report tonight.
Did you mean to miss Jackson Street, or did they not have anything?
I gave you the highlights of the highlights.
Okay.
I'll post the rest.
Okay. So that concludes the superintendent report. The next, we have a report on the superintendent's contract.
So I am very pleased to report out from executive session that we have voted amendment to the superintendent's contract for next year. So the language of the contract remains the same except for this amendment. In terms of salary, we are, we have agreed to increase the salary by 2% for the next year. In addition, we are granting additional stipend for professional development. This is a one-time, non-recurring expense. We, I will reiterate publicly to the superintendent that we gave him a very, very favorable evaluation, and what we are able to offer in relation to what we are able to offer anyone in our district is not necessarily a reflection of our esteem, but this is what we felt we were able to do, and the superintendent has agreed to this. And I appreciate and thank him for that.
Thank you. I appreciate it, too.
And I guess I, I know we just discussed this quietly, but I really firmly believe that we need to take a vote on this in open session. So I guess I, when we discussed this, I assumed there'd be a discussion of it in executive session, but then we'd take a vote on it in an open session.
According to our attorney, that was not necessary, but it does no harm. We can, we can, but I don't see the purpose of it. We were advised that we did not need to do that.
I cannot believe that would be, but I, you know, I wasn't privy to that, but I just know that...
I had a long discussion with our attorney, who said this is an amendment to a contract that gets voted in executive session, but it needs to be reported out in a full meeting.
I'd like to, I think we should vote on it. I would like to make a motion that we amend the contract to include the language that you just presented.
Second.
Yeah. Again, just to discuss it, I didn't have an opportunity to talk about this. I just, I, yeah, I mean, the South Hadley School Board got in very big trouble for renegotiating a contract with a superintendent in executive session and not voting on it.
We didn't renegotiate a contract.
Okay.
We made an amendment that was actually part of the original contract that we would discuss compensation for the next year, but that's all. We did not rewrite any of it.
But we changed the terms of the contract.
No, we didn't, actually.
So we didn't, so...
The original contract, the original contract states that we, that we will negotiate a salary and compensation for the outgoing years.
Okay. I don't think there is any harm in voting on it in open session. I don't think there's any harm to do that, so...
If that's the case, I'd like just to make one comment under the discussion, because I didn't vote for it, but I thought something else should have been more favorable, and that's what I wanted to say in an open meeting, that it wasn't that I thought that he shouldn't receive this. I thought it should have been a better, a different package.
Okay. So there's been a motion made and seconded to ratify the... So there's been a motion made and seconded to ratify the agreed-upon...
Our lawyer's looking very pensive.
No, I think it will have no substantive effect, because the executive session, since the contract is executed, the reasons for keeping it confidential no longer exist.
That's the other part of it that's...
But if we want to go ahead and vote to repeat our vote in executive session, it has no, won't have any substantive effect.
Okay.
But we can do it if you feel like it will put us in a better position in terms of...
We have a motion. And seconded. So all those in favor in open session, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay. Any abstentions? Okay. Okay. So that's the final item that we have. Is there any new business? Mrs. Minnick?
I don't know if the rest of the committee is aware. I only just became aware, woke up and realized that there are a number of revisions to the charter that are suggested coming before the electoral, for a vote in November, and several of those proposed revisions affect school committee members, and I think you should be aware of them. Particularly that school committee members will have a two-year term, not four-year term, for ward representatives, which means that there would be no staggered turnover, and you could conceivably have an entirely new school committee every two years. That no city employee may serve as a school committee representative, and in the past, we have had city employees serve. I... Jim Dostal worked at the...
I had to stop being a substitute in Northampton.
You can't be a school per employee, but Jim Dostal was superintendent of this, what you call it, plant, and served on the school committee for years. And also, the charter changes the appointing authority for subcommittees and other positions within the school committee, and I think that, I personally believe that all three of these things will have a negative impact on the functioning of the school committee, and so I just want to make people aware of that.
We did look it up, and there is no provision in the current charter for who appoints the committees. That's in our bylaws, and so this would mean that the charter and the bylaws are in conflict. There was no change to the number of votes, by the way. I did look that up, how many signatures you needed.
Right. I did, too. Which is why I did...
I think this is appropriate for new business. This meeting has caused me to think that, you know, we really need to have more frequent, shorter meetings. When you look at the agenda for tonight, there is no way it could end on time, and I think we've sort of boxed ourselves into this when we found that we were basically rehashing all the subcommittee meetings at the full committee. But then we, so we eliminated the subcommittee meetings because they were being duplicated, but we didn't really do anything to deal with the fact that we were doing it all here at the full committee. And we've had, what, half of our meetings recently have gone this late, and I think it's a detriment to good decision-making, good discussion, to public participation. I think we should, I don't know what the right way to take this up is, but I think we should open a discussion about scheduling regularly scheduled bimonthly meetings as opposed to regularly scheduled monthly meetings with the occasional bimonthly meeting.
Howard, I agree with you. I think we should discuss it, but in the meantime, I'm going to move to a different turn.
To be arranged a date for the, doesn't it say future meetings?
Yeah.
To be determined.
Right, but we have one.
Yeah, it's 10:24 at 1:00 P.M.
At 1:00 P.M.
Okay. There's been a motion made and seconded to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.